Yes, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I apologize to you guys. I've been bouncing in meetings and I'm like making sure I have enough um. Enough, little enough juice than my equipment to be able to run this meeting. Alright, so. Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening. It is seven oh one. This is the agenda for the special legislative meeting of the mayor council for the city of Mount Rainier. It is a virtual meeting held today, Tuesday seventeen twenty twenty five at seven um P M. It is gonna be followed by a hearing and a work session, so this is a special meeting. So thank you guys for your patience. I'd like to do a call to order. Uh Joseph Jakuta?
Present.
Jenny Half Power?
Present.
Daniel Carr?
Present.
I almost called you Daniel War One, cuz I was reading the name. Um Valerie Woodall?
I'm here.
Alright, so we have a full quorum. Valerie, can you go ahead and uh lead the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Can you move on to um a review of the agenda, please?
Yes, um agenda of the special legislative meeting of the mayor and city council, city of Mount Rainier, Maryland, virtual meeting Tuesday, June seventeenth twenty twenty five at seven P M. One call to order, pledge of allegiance. We just did that review of agenda. That's what we're doing now. The mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Three, public comment. Please see page two of the agenda where rules for public comment are listed. If you wish to speak, please advise during the virtual meeting. Old business number four, second reading and adoption of resolution number zero three twenty twenty five, nominating members for appointment to the leg- legacy mixed use town center. L M U T C design review committee representing the city of Mount Rainier for a two-year term beginning on July sixth twenty twenty five. Ten minutes, the mayor and council will have the second reading and adopt resolution number zero three dash twenty twenty five, nominating members for appointment to the legacy mixed use town center. L M U T C design review committee representing the city of Mount Rainier for a two-year term beginning on July sixth twenty twenty five. Number five, um second reading and adoption of the re- resolution number zero four dash twenty twenty five proclaiming May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Ten minutes. Um, do I have to read the second part in here for each one?
You um you don't, I'll re- I'll read through it. Go ahead.
Number six, vote on approval of minutes, five minutes. The mayor and council will vote on approving the minutes for May twenty 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 five work session. New business, number seven, appointment of Miss Morgan Pennell to the Ethics Commission. Ten minutes, the mayor and council will vote to appoint Miss Morgan Pennell to the Ethics Commission. And number eight, adjournment.
Okay, thank you uh so much, Valerie. Um guys, because we already have about a four-hour meeting. Um after the resolutions are read, I'm gonna go straight to uh vote, discussion if you have any and straight vote, okay? So to at least um ease up some of the time, but um. I'm trying, I will try my best to follow through cuz the resolutions have been read um in at least two different occasions and word by word. So they'll be read word by word, and I think we'll have put our input or stay in all of them by now. Okay? Alright, thank you so much. We're gonna move on to number, item number three, public comment. Can you go ahead and put the script up, please? Thank you, Meli. Rules for public comment. The mayor and city council invite and welcome comments at a public meeting. The mayor or presiding officer will recognize you. Please introduce yourself, first and last name for recording purposes, and give the name of your street and block number I G. Um forty-three hundred block of thirty-four street. Please indicate in the chat whether you would like the mayor to read your comment or you will speak on your comment. Um it's either one or the other, right? Public comment has the limit of three minutes per speaker unless otherwise agreed upon by the mayor. While speaking, please rem- maintain a courteous tone and avoid personal attacks. If you wish to lodge a complaint about the performance or conduct of any city employee, please bring it to your concerns to attention of the city manager, who will look into the matter and respond to you. As a courtesy to other residents, the business, the council requests that speakers do not use a specific address or some names of individuals when describing a situation or making complaint. Noting the block is preferred over any specific address. Alright, can you move it up, please? Thank you, Meli. Alright, so um I have read the rules for the public comment, and if you would like to speak, please go ahead and write name, last name, block, and street number. Um as an example, you know, Selena Benitez, thirty-seven hundred block of thirty-seventh street on the chat. Okay. So I see nothing in the chat. Millie, am I missing something or is there something there I'm not seeing?
I don't see anything either, Mayor.
Alright. Thank you so much. We're gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and close a public comment. Oh, go ahead, um. So uh Marietta Largess, thirty-two hundred block of Shepherd Street, go ahead, the the floor is yours.
Hi, I hadn't listened to uh the public minutes. I didn't see anything about this vote of no confidence, um which I'm very concerned about, so I would actually like to hear about this.
So Ms. Maria Largess, the minutes reflect what is, what has happened in the previous meeting. There was nothing that addressed that or even was submitted to us when it comes to that. Okay, thank you for that. Alright, so.
So that not being discussed at all today?
We will not be discussing in the minutes now, and it's a personnel matter. So thank you.
I'm I'm confused.
Hi, I'm I'm sorry.
I was, I I apologize. I really don't wanna cause problems, but how is our police basically saying that they don't feel that the city government is doing its job, not a matter for public discussion?
So I'm gonna give you three minutes to uh go ahead and speak, and then I'm gonna um then I'm gonna move on to the next person, so go ahead, cuz I don't wanna feel like I'm interrupting you.
No, I I I I'm generally confused and a little concerned. I've found this comment about the police department having a vote of no confidence against the city manager, and I am very concerned that apparently it's not going to be discussed at this meeting. Now, I understand not discussing personnel issues, but you'll forgive me, if the police don't feel that the city is doing its job, how we're, how how is that going to affect public safety? How is that going to affect policing in general in our area? I mean, why would that not be discussed? I don't understand.
So um you asked me why it's not in the minutes. The minutes reflect what was ha- what happened in the last meeting. That topic was not addressed or brought up to our attention in the last meeting, and the minutes are for um I believe May twenty or something along those lines. Uh Millie, for when were the minutes in the agenda? Can you put them up?
Yes, but what I'm asking is, I didn't hear it reflected in the agenda for the rest of the meeting.
It is not in the agenda to be reflected. It's a personal matter. Personal matters are not brought out to the agenda.
But again, I'm not asking about the personnel side of this. I'm asking about the public safety side of this.
Mi- Ms. Marietta, I um I I will be more than happy to answer your your question or after this, but at this point, it's like I've asked you to let me know when you were done with your with your statement after three minutes, so I don't interrupt you. But I cannot be going back and forward um with the statements.
Right, so no answer then. Thank you.
Okay. So um I have a question from Mr. Phillip Wang. When will um when would W S S C present? Uh the presentation for W S S C will be in the work session, so following after this um special legislative meeting, we have a hearing and then the work session. So it's three meetings, one after the other. So um once we're done with this meeting, it's the public hearing regarding uh the budget, and then it moves on to the to the next item. Okay? Hopefully that answers your question as well. Um so what time? Um hopefully within the next thirty minutes to, I wanna say thirty minutes maybe to an hour? I apologize. Okay, I don't have a set time. We're gonna move the agenda as efficient as we can, but um I will say um at least thirty minutes or more. Okay? Alright. Okay. Alright, at this moment, I'm closing a public comment. Can you move it up, Millie, so I could see it? Okay, old business, second reading and adoption of resolution oh three dash twenty twenty five, nominating members for appointment to the legacy mixed use town center. L M U T C design review committee uh representing the city of Mount Rainier for a two-year term beginning on July sixth twenty twenty five. The mayor council will have the second reading adoption of number oh three dash twenty twenty five, nominating members of appointment to the legacy mixed use town center, L M U T C, design review committee, represent the city of Mount Rainier for a two-year term beginning on July sixth twenty twenty five. Do you have um the resolution in front of you? Okay, um Valerie, can you help me read it, please?
Yes, um okay, uh resolution number zero three uh twenty twenty five introduced by the mayor and city council, nominating members for appointment to the legacy mixed use uh town center. L M U T C design review committee representing the city of Mount Rainier for a two-year term beginning on July sixth twenty twenty five. Whereas on November tw- twenty-nine twenty twenty-one, the district council approved C R dash one three six dash twenty twenty-one, the countywide map amendment C M A, which reclassified properties in the M U T C mixed use town center zone to the L M U T C legacy mixed use town center zone effective uh April one twenty twenty-two, and whereas the Prince George County zoning ordinance states that each L M U T C includes a local design review committee that is advisory to the planning board, and whereas each L M U T C design review committee consists of seven members nominated by the respective legis- legislative bodies of the municipal corporations and are confirmed by the planning board, and whereas the terms of service, the term of service for L M U T C design review committees, uh committee members is two years, and whereas a minimum of one serving member on each L M U T C design review committee shall be a design professional or demonstrate experience in the fields of architecture, engineering, historic preservation and or planning, and whereas the terms of the members of the design review committee uh for the city of Mount Rainier, the city are expiring as of July sixth twenty twenty-five, and the council city um wishes to nominate members for the succeeding two-year term. Now therefore be it resolved that by the city council and the city of Mount Rainier, that one, um that section one, the city nominates the following individuals, having the fields of expertise set forth below to serve on the city's design review committee, and request that the Prince George County Planning Board appoint them to two-year terms. Um nominee, um Robin Bliss, demonstrated experience, design professional, Elena Brave, design professional, Nathan Burch, Nathan Cedarth, um design professional, professional, uh Sachin Kandari, Samantha Kay, design professional, Anthony Lee, design professional. Section two, this uh resolution is adopted by the council of the city of Mount Rainier this day of twenty twenty-five and shall take effect immediately, provided that a fair summary has been read at the meeting at which it is introduced and adopted. That a copy shall be posted at city hall for at least two weeks after it becomes effective, and that a fair summary is published at least once in a newspaper, having general circulation in the city inclusive of the city's newsletter or otherwise delivered to every city household.
Alright, thank you so much. This is the a fair reading of resolution oh three dash twenty twenty-five. We have um can you, can you put it on? Can you put the agenda on, Millie? I'm sorry. So this will be the second reading. It is up for a vote. Thank you so much. Uh motion to approve resolution um oh three dash twenty twenty-five nominating members for the appointment for the legacy mixed use town center, L M U T C. Um representing the city of Mariner for a two-year term beginning um July sixth twenty twenty-five. Can I have a second? Second. Thank you so much. Any discussion? Go ahead, Joseph.
Thank you. Thank you for making the changes I requested in the work session, and I'm excited for these folks to serve on the committee.
Perfect, thank you, guys. And if we're ready, are we up, are we ready for a vote? We're good? Alright, perfect. Any objections? Abstentions? Hearing none. This passes unanimously. Thank you guys so much, and thank you to the committee members for um signing up. We are very lucky to have so much talent in the city. We are required one, and we're putting forward five um design review um members that are qualified in the different fields, so thank you for that. Alright, moving on to item number five, second reading adoption of resolution oh four dash twenty twenty-five proclaiming May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Uh the co- mayor and council will have a second reading and adoption of resolution oh four dash twenty twenty-five. Procla- uh proclaiming May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Okay, um if you guys put it up, and just as a reminder, um it's already been proclaimed um a couple years in a row now. We're just, I'm just moving it from uh proclamations to resolutions, uh so that was like um also um formatted into the city record in a different way as well. Uh ta 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 ta, there you go. Okay, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Mount Rainier, Maryland proclaiming May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Whereas since the first Jewish immigrants arrived in the sixteenth century in what is now known as the United States, Jewish people have been instrumental in the prosperity of our state and nation, and whereas Jewish American Heritage Month was first recognized nationally by President George W. Bush in two thousand and six, and has been reaffirming in the following years, and whereas Jewish Americans continue to enrich every part of American life in the city of Mariner's educators, entrepreneurships, the arts, at athletes, and artists, scientists, and entertainers, public office and activists, labor community leaders, diplomats, military service members, public health heroes, and more, and whereas during the Jewish American Heritage Month, we elevate the achievements and contributions made by the Jewish Americans to our economy, cultures, spiritual, and political, and whereas, whoop, that, thank you, Millie. Jews suffered fought to expand freedom and justice, and Jews faced leaders linked arms with giants of the civil rights movement to demand equal rights for all, and whereas early on, they fought for religious freedom, helping define one of the bedrocks principles upon which America was built. Union soldiers celebrated Passover in the midst of civil war, and whereas during this month, we encourage our resident Mariner to seek out ways to encourage Jewish history, including a mu- uh museum exhibits, literary works, and more, and whereas in May twenty twenty-three, President Biden launched the White House National Strategy to Encounter Antisemitism in efforts with bipartisan backing. That is one of the most ambiguous comprehensive efforts in the U S history to encounter antisemitism, and now therefore be it resolved. We call upon our residents of the city of Mariner to take actions at the community level to ensure that discrimination of any kind, including antisemitism, are unacceptable in the city of Mount Rainier, and um there be resolved that during the month that celebrate that many contributions Jewish Americans continue to make in Mariner, Maryland through the United States, and resolved that the mayor and council of Mariner recognize the acknowledgement contributes to the achievements and influence to of the Jewish American community, and resolved that the mayor and city council of Mariner proclaims May as Jewish American Heritage Month. This resolution is adopted by our council of the city of Mariner on last last twenty twenty-five. So this is second reading as well? Right, Millie? You could put in the agenda. So uh motion on the floor to approve resolution oh five dash twenty twenty-five. Resolution, mayor and council of the city of Mariner, Maryland proclaiming May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Any discussion? Objections? Abstentions? Hearing none, it passes um unanimously. Okay? Alright, thank you, guys. Oh, sorry, I thought I heard a second. Who was the second?
I'll second that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. You guys have to be a little bit quicker over there with your seconds. You guys are always fighting, and now there was nothing. I thought I hurt someone. Alright, perfect. Thank you, guys. So any discussion? We'll redo the thing. Objections, abstentions, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you guys so much. And uh vote on approval of minutes. The mayor council vote on approving the minutes for May twenty twenty-five work session. These minutes have been submitted to you in the work session package as well as in tonight's package, so there's been like a, please uh maybe make more than two weeks to be able to review them, okay? So motion on the floor to approve the minutes for May twenty twenty-five for the work session. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, but um Valerie, any discussion? Objections, abstentions, hearing none. Minutes for May twenty work session um have been approved. Okay, moving on to the next item. Alright, appointed of Miss Morgan Pennell to the Ethics Commission. The mayor council voted on the appoint of Miss Morgan Pennell to the Ethics Commission. So is Ms. Pennell here? Oh yeah, I do see you, Morgan. Hi, Morgan. You wanna say a few words before we go into motion? Go ahead.
I am pleased to join the Ethics Commission and help further this cause for the um city.
Thank you so much, and thank you for um raising your hand to volunteer, and goes for all of our community members that volunteer for our committees. Alright, so can I uh making a motion on the floor to approve Ms. Morgan Pennell to the Ethics Commission for the city of Mount Rainier?
Sa- a second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any discussion? Objections, abstentions, hearing none. Um Ms. Morgan Pennell, you're uh been um appointed to the Ethics Commission. Yay, your point person is from the staff is um Melissa, and then um our attorneys, any questions um should be the one directly for the next, what the next process is, and um big thank you to our wonderful committee members who volunteer and raise their hands to do this. We couldn't do that without you. Alright, thank you so much. You're welcome to continue joining us or not. It's up to you. Thank you so much. Alright. Moving on to item number eight, motion to adjourn the legislative meeting.
A second.
Is there probably moving second? Any discussion? Objections, abstentions? Hearing none. We are gonna be um this the legislative meeting. Special legislative meeting is um has been adjourned at seven twenty-three P M. And now we're gonna be moving on to um this is the public hearing for ordinance oh three dash twenty twenty-five budget amendment number two. This is a virtual hearing today, Tuesday, June seventeen twenty twenty-five, and is scheduled following the special legislative meeting. And I know this is sounds silly, but I have to do roll call for every single one for the record, okay? Daniel? You're mute.
Present, yeah, current present, sorry.
Joseph?
Here.
Jenny?
Present.
Valerie?
I'm here.
Alright, so it is um full house, you know, when it comes to council. Nobody left between the five seconds in between one meeting and the other. Thank you, guys. Alright, so moving on to a review of the agenda. Um Valerie, can you go ahead and read it?
Yeah, this is the agenda for the public hearing of uh ordinance number zero three dash twenty twenty-five budget amendment number two. It's a virtual hearing on Tuesday seventeen, I'm sorry, Tuesday, June seventeen twenty twenty-five, following the special legislative meeting. Um one, to call to order. Two, review of the agenda. The mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, public hearing regarding ordinance number zero three dash twenty twenty-five budget amendment number two, and number four, adjourn- adjournment.
Thank you so much. Um it's so moving on to item number three. Public hearing regarding ordinance oh three dash twenty twenty-five budget amendment number two. This budget amendment has been read in prior occasions, and we are gonna go ahead and read it um. This is actually the hearing for the budget. Mr. Kamali, are we or Meli, can somebody guide me one or the other if we have to um do we have, we already read it twice and got a vote and approved. This is just a hearing, correct?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. So if we have a member of the audience that has a comment on budget hearing ordinance oh three dash twenty twenty-five budget member number two, please let us know. And just a reminder, this is the budget that um included um re- um the grants, you know, when we get, I'll I'll give it some, I'll talk in the meantime while we figure out somebody's gonna come on and say something about it, but when we work with the grants, we do receive them, right? And then we have to do a budget amendment to include it into the budget to make sure that at the end of the fiscal year, our budget uh numbers are matched. If not, we will have a deficit of X amount of money of money coming in that is not accounted for. So a bit ago, we have been doing um this uh wrapping at the end of like the year, fiscal year to make sure that we um we put the grant money um into the budget, specifically what we received. So you'll see it like coming in and coming out because money is used. Um there was also um movement of uh money within the budget to be able to um fix the police department roof, and the last one was to be able to um cover the part for Pots Hall, money that we've been more or less saving for. At least I was told by somebody that the project's obviously more than ten years, right? Maybe twenty, the last twenty years. Um we have been very wise as a city and past mayors and councils, right? To be um very cautious with the money that's being spent in order to be able to um utilize it um when we need it for the projects that are, you know, are needed in the city, and that was one of the last buildings that um we needed to um make adjustments are, you know, where staff is located at. Alright, so I see nothing, and um so I'm gonna move to item number four. So Kara, you said this is Kara. I appreciate the puzzle needs to be finished. Could you remind me why puzzle needs one for foundation of funds? So Kara, you said this is Kara. I appreciate the puzzle needs to be finished. Could you remind me why puzzle needs one for foundation of funds? How much was relocated? What are some of the things that won't be covered now because the money is going to the hall, to Pots Hall? Um nothing's not gonna be covered um for us moving that money. So the money for Pots Hall is not uh was not designated for something else. That um, sorry, guys, I'm still a little bit under the weather. Um of the money that's being removed from our funding is not being taken away from any specific project or any project whatsoever. The money was just, is just there, sitting in our account for us to be able to utilize as we uh so um feel is needed. Right? So nothing is being cut um to cover the the coverage of Pots Hall. Okay. I think I got a little bit. Yeah, so this is not additional money. It's actually money that was like put forward. It's like a seven million dollar project. And um I think more than half, we were able to finance it through grants and bonds and um ARPA funding and everything else. So, yeah, so as a reminder, Pots Hall is a historical building. Uh the longest standing historical building in the area, going um even longer than when the city was established. So we had a historical building, however, it was um, you know, after a whole century plus. It needed works and it repairs and it had to be brought up to date and that's exactly what we did. Including making sure that it was um ADA compliance. Um and so we added an elevator shaft and all of that. So um um historical buildings are a little bit more pricey to um restore, but we got the building that we wanted and we needed. And that is the last um bet to cover um our part of like um doing Pots Hall. But, yeah, no money's being taken away from um from something else to cover it. That's uh money that uh the Pots Hall project has. I've been in council for a year and one of the first meetings that I had was like um the architects um coming to talk to us about Pots Hall. And I think that most of us have gone through that, but has been work that many people had done and, you know, obviously acquiring the building, you know, keeping it up to date to a certain extent, but also um it needed to um be done in it in order to be able to um utilize it for our growing community. Um and, okay, all right, perfect. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second, uh I'll I'll make the motion.
Second, motion to adjourn, probably moved and second, any discussion? Objections, abstentions, hearing none. The hearing for ordinance oh three dash twenty twenty-five budget member number two has come to an end. Thank you, guys. And this is like more procedural. We have to do the two hearings, bring it to the work session, real loud, and then the hearing is the final um part aside from like uh throw out that information to the, you know, uh in in that said. Um but, all right, thank you, guys. All right. Uh moving on to the next item, work session of the mayor and council, the city of Mount Rainier, Maryland, virtually work session for today, Tuesday, June seventeen. Sorry, you guys. Following the public hearing. Um and I'm gonna do a call to order again. All right. And this is uh so this is like technically our third meeting for tonight. Um moving on to call to order, I have Danielle.
Present.
Jenny?
Still here.
Valerie?
Still here.
Joseph?
I also remain here.
That's what you guys tell me and watch. They're gonna be like, can I get a water break? And I'll be like, they're not here. Um, all right, perfect. Thank you, guys, so much. Um we have a full quorum again for all three meetings. Thanks, you guys, for your dedication. This is the last round of meetings for this fiscal year and then the staff gets to work. You know, on finalizing budgets, numbers and everything else to make sure we get to the order and everything else we put into work during the summer. All right, review of the agenda. Valerie, we go ahead and review the agenda.
Yes, this is the agenda for the work session of the mayor and council, city of Mount Rainier, virtual work session, Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, following the public hearing. Items for discussion, number one, call to order, number two, review of the agenda. The mayor and council will review the agenda, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, presentation and discussion on the West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan as sectional map amendment. In twenty minutes, the mayor and council will receive a presentation on the West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan and sectional map amendment. Number four, presentation and discussion on WSSC Comprehensive Basement Build-Up Study in Mount Rainier. The mayor and council will receive a presentation on a proposed comprehensive study by WSSC to investigate and address basement buildups experienced by Mount Rainier residents. Number five, presentation and discussion on building application for three, four, two, one Newton Street, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two oh seven, one, two. Ten minutes, the mayor and council will receive a presentation from the owner of three, four, two, one Newton Street, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two oh seven, one, two. Number six, proclamation for Juneteenth, Mayor Silvina Benitez will issue a proclamation for Juneteenth. Number seven, discussion on the mayor and council priorities. Twenty minutes, the mayor and council will have a discussion on their priorities. Number eight, discussion on residency requirement for city committees, twenty minutes. The mayor and council will discuss establishing a residency requirement for city committees, stating that individuals must reside within the city uh within the boundaries of the city of Mount Rainier to be able to serve on a committee. Number nine, proclamation for Small Cities Month, ten minutes, Mayor Benitez will issue a proclamation for Small Cities Month. Number ten, discussion on committee assignments, twenty minutes, the mayor and council will have a discussion on committee assignments. Number eleven, presentation and discussion on letter to MNCPBC on preliminary West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan draft. Eleven, one, one hundred and eleven, um fifteen minutes. Um council member Joseph Jacque will present to the mayor and council a letter um to MNCPBC on preliminary West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan. Um number twelve, presentation of minutes, five minutes, the city clerk will present the uh June third, twenty twenty-five legislative minutes to the mayor and council. And number thirteen, adjournment. Um upcoming events, District Forty-seven Community Health Fair, June twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, eleven AM to three PM at the Brentwood Fire Station. Um and Ma- Mount Rainier Skate Park Creative Community Day, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, twelve PM to two PM at three, six, six, four, dash, three, seven, nine, eight, Oda Street in Mount Rainier.
Yeah, so just the fire station is the Bunker Hill Fire Station. Now, the Brentwood Fire Station, it is located in Brentwood, but it it is Bunker Hill Fire Station. All right, so I I saw it in the flowers, so this is not a news, but it is the Bunker Hill Fire Station and they're actually gonna do it, I believe, in the parking lot, which is Mount Rainier, not Brentwood, but that's a different story. Um plenty of love to uh Brentwood, who who we collaborate very, very well with as well. All right, so there's been a review of the agenda. There you go. It's a long agenda. Bear with us um and we'll go through it. Go ahead, Danielle, let's see your hand on.
Thank you. Um I would like to add and um I'd like to add an agenda item to discuss for the council to go into a closed session in response to the aforementioned um FOP letter that was uh published publicly. I think that the uh communi- the community begs for us to have a discussion and so I'd like to make that proposal.
Um, okay, I heard your proposal. Is there a second? Okay, there is no second motion dies. All right, moving on to item number three. Presentation, discussion of West uh Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan and selection of map amendments. The American Council will receive a presentation, the West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan and selection map amendment. Who's presenting on this one?
Good evening, Mayor Benitez. Um Tony Feltz.
How are you?
Hello, Deputy Director Feltz, um with the Planning Department is here. And also Deputy Project Manager Justin Thornton is here and myself, Project Facilitator Sarah Benton. Thank you for having us.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um do we have uh your pres- I think we had a presentation in in our package. Do you need us to um do um share um access with you?
I believe access was just shared with Justin. I think he's, I just saw it say he is host now, so let's see if he's able to share.
Yes, let me pull it up right now.
But it's not fine. You need us to put, Justin, you're you're gonna be hosting or do you guys need us to send this to someone else? Oh, there you go.
I was just gonna share my screen. Um I think that that'll be fine for now. Yeah.
All right, perfect. Uh go ahead, the floor is yours.
Okay, can you guys see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Justin. All right, thank you, Mayor Benitez and city council members. I'm Sarah Benton, the project facilitator, um joined by, as I mentioned, um Deputy Planning Director of Administration, Tony Feltz and Justin Thornton, our Deputy Project Manager. And the purpose of today's presentation is to introduce the third draft of the West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan and sectional map amendment and highlight the major changes between the second and third drafts. So I will start with a quick background of the project and then Justin will go over the key policies and major changes that have been applied since the second draft and then I'll conclude by going over our current schedule and what the next steps are. This is the timeline of key events for the plan and SMA, just to give you a little reminder. Um this highlights the important milestones in the process leading up to where we are today. On January twenty twenty-two, this the county council officially initiated this sector plan and the sectional map amendment. The sectional map amendment is that zoning piece. Um by July twenty twenty-two, the initial draft sector plan and proposed SMA were released to the public for review and feedback. And then shortly after, on October twenty twenty-two, we did, we held our first joint public hearing. And then on December twenty twenty-two, um the planning board remanded or sent back the draft sector plan and SMA to staff for further revision. From January twenty twenty-three to May twenty twenty-four, the project team worked on revising that second draft uh based on the feedback received at that previous hearing. And then in October twenty twenty-four, we did hold an additional joint public hearing to gather additional input on this new draft. And then finally, on January ninth of this year, the planning board remanded the draft again for further revisions. Um and staff requested and were approved permission to print the third draft on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Um so we're happy to be here again with you all this evening with this third version um of this sector plan. Next slide. Um this slide shows and reminds you of the sector plan boundary, um which is primarily located in Planning Area sixty-eight. The area is entirely within Councilmanic District Two and includes portions of the city of Heightsville, town of Brenton Wood, and of course, the city of Mount Rainier. The northern boundary of the area is defined by Prince George's Plaza Regional Transit District and the southern boundary abuts Washington DC. Additionally, the area surrounds the boundary of the two thousand and six West Heightsville Transit District Development Plan. Next slide. Uh the plan vision is fundamentally unchanged from the prior drafts with just a few minor wording tweaks. Um the next couple of slides also include some illustrative concepts from the draft plan that depict um the plan area if the plan's vision and recommendations were to be implemented. Um the vision for the West Heightsville Queens Chapel area states the following. Centered around the West Heightsville Metro Station, West Heightsville Queens Chapel is a vibrant, resilient and culturally socioeconomically diverse community that embraces the Northwest Branch Stream Valley Park and serves as a gateway to Prince George's County. Equity and resiliency are championed by the community while supporting government officials and making policy decisions. Diverse neighborhoods provide multiple housing choices for a range of income levels. Natural resources and open spaces are key in providing additional assets to the community with proximity to parklands. These parklands serve an ecological function and are programmed for a variety of recreation opportunities that promote wellness. Streets and shared use paths are accessible, comfortable and safe for all people and all modes of travel. Local businesses are the heartbeat of this community with attractive, lively and thriving commercial areas and streetscapes that support an entrepreneurial atmosphere and encourage social interactions. West Heightsville Queens Chapel is a transit oriented community where the public realm and mixed use areas work together to serve as community hubs for all residents, business owners and visitors. Now, before we jump into the key policies and changes, let's go over some of the community outreach and feedback um for this third draft. In the months leading up to the joint public hearing this July, on July first, staff have been briefing area planning committees and municipalities about the major changes to the preliminary plan with a focus on changes within the respective city limits. Just for your awareness and our briefings with neighboring city of Heightsville listed on this slide, we heard mixed support around the idea of diversifying housing types. Some supported the idea of allowing duplexes, triplexes and townhomes in more areas, especially through rezoning the RSF sixty-five uh areas to RSFA, but others had reservations. We also heard a range of opinions about accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Again, some support, but also some concerns, particularly about their impact on neighborhood character and infrastructure. Transportation came up quite a bit as well. Uh things like bike planning, safety for motor scooters and potential parking loss were all flagged as concerns as well. And lastly, there were comments about development and environmental environmentally sensitive areas and the plan's recommendations to create an additional floodplain overlay zone as a way to better manage risks in those areas. Uh and just to clarify, this is not a summary of this of the city of Heightsville's formal comments on the plan, but just a summary of what we've heard so far from members of the community um of the Heightsville community at these meetings. Next slide. Additionally, based on community output, excuse me, input, sorry, from the last joint public hearing in October, staff were prompted to re-review certain aspects of the last draft of the plan. This included conducting a comprehensive review of the plan to ensure alignment with recent legislative changes and evolving community needs. In response to House Bill five thirty-eight, which took effect on January first, twenty twenty-five, the plan was reviewed and revised to support efforts in addressing affordable housing shortages. Similarly, updates were made to reflect the changes made to the zoning ordinance last by last year's Council Bill fifteen dash twenty twenty-four, which revised density standards across multiple zones. In addition to legislative review, staff assessed the potential loss of existing naturally occurring affordable housing units and developed strategies aimed at mitigating resident displacement. Lastly, staff reviewed and revised the zoning for single family detached residential neighborhoods throughout the entire sector plan. And now I'll turn it over to Justin to review the key policies and major changes for each plan element. Justin?
Thank you so much, uh Ms. Benton. Uh Mr. Thorn, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Uh thank you so much, uh Mayor, and uh thank you so much, Sarah. Uh the next several slides outline the major changes to the West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan. Uh generally, the there were only major changes in the land use and zoning, transportation, housing in neighborhoods, community heritage, culture and design, and public facilities plan elements. There were no major changes to the plan vision or the plan elements for economic prosperity, natural environment and healthy communities. Okay, so first, what we'll tackle is the land use elements and zoning. The land use policies aim to create a vibrant and sustainable community around the West Heightsville Metro Emperor West Heightsville Metro Station proposing a mix of land uses at transit oriented densities while incorporating best management practices for sensitive natural areas. Okay, this slide highlights a major change to the land use element, specifically a change in the West Heightsville Local Transit Center Boundary from the previous draft. The boundary has been updated to reflect the addition and removal of the of certain right of ways. Additionally, several properties along Chilum Road have been returned to the center boundary, helping to ensure properties closest to the metro station remain within the center. These changes aim to encourage growth near metro while mitigating potential environmental impacts. Two new strategies have been added to the land use chapter under LU three to address environmental risk and fair development. One strategy proposes a comprehensive floodplain study that exposes creating a floodplain overlay zone in the zoning ordinance. The second strategy recommends exploring a transfer rights uh a transfer of development rights program as a tool to redirect growth from sensitive areas to more appropriate areas. Uh, okay, so uh specifically for uh the city of Mount Rainier, uh there are two uh key proposals for future land use. Varnum Street Commercial District is proposed for neighborhood mixed use to support revitalization around the K Word Theater. And Queenstown Apartments is proposed for mixed use to support. And Queenstown Apartments is proposed for mixed use to support potential future development near the metro. These are not changes from uh, the previous draft of the plan. As for the major changes since the last draft, all single-family detached neighborhoods are being proposed for residential medium high. From residential, residential medium. Reflecting opportunities for more diverse housing throughout the entire sector plan area and leveraging proximity to the metro. Uh, this will allow for higher intensity uh, uses in these areas that lie completely within the fifteen-minute walk shed and ten-minute. Minute bike shed. Additionally, the Washington Gas Light Company property is being proposed for reclassification from institutional land used to mix use. Encouraging a diverse range of uses on this site in the future. These updates are part of the plan's broader vision to promote development near the metro station. Okay, so we are showing this slide just to show you the existing zoning, and this is just for reference as we dive into the. Proposed zoning that will be on the next slide. Okay, uh, to implement the sector plan policies and land use recommendations, the sector plan area proposes to re- reclassify. Properties throughout the plan boundary to bring zoning into conformance with the sector plan. In the plan area, there are thirty-eight total proposed zoning changes. The zoning for all residential, single-family sixty-five areas have been recommended for, for residential, single-family attached zones. Uh, to implement the future land use recommendation just mentioned. This rezoning will allow for a more diverse range of housing types. And right sizes the, and right sizes the zoning to allow for the construction of a house on a smaller lot. Or five thousand square feet minimum, to be exact. Uh, and smaller lots are typically, are typical in this community and other inner ring suburbs. In the city of Mount Rainier, only eleven homes will be affected by this proposal. Additionally, the Washington Gas Light Company property is recommended to be rezoned to local transit-oriented edge or LTOE. To support the long-term goal of mixed-use transit-oriented development at this site. As you will see late in the presentation, the proposed change in the Washington Gaslight. Property prompts proposed changes regarding upgrades to bike pedestrian facility recommendations for Chilum Road. And some intermediate designs guidelines for additional uses. These proposed changes are reflected in the sectional map amendment as zoning changes thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight, which you can see on your screen now. And just to remind you of, of the other zoning proposals specific to the city of Mount Rainier. That have been in all versions of the draft plan, please note proposed. Zoning change ten, which is residential multi-family twenty or RMF twenty to local transit-oriented core or LTOC. These properties consist of Queenstown Apartments, and this proposed rezoning will foster. The intensity of development suitable for the core area of the local transit center walkable and bikeable to metro. Zoning changes eleven recommends uh, properties changed from LTO. Uh, E, uh, uh, local transit-oriented edge to commercial service or CS. To preserve neighborhood retail and commercial areas. Zoning chain seventeen recommends properties from commercial, general, and office. Res- uh, slash residential, single-family sixty-five. To commercial neighborhood CN to facilitate opportunities for neighborhood serving. Serving mixed use and revitalization of the K Wood Theater Commercial Area on Varnum Street. With the proposed changes with the future land use and recommendations in zoning, the goal of promoting housing affordability is supported by adding additional housing type options. With these additions to housing types, this plan is the stepstone to supporting ADU if uh, county legislation ever permits. Okay, so switching to transportation and mobility, when it comes to. Uh, transportation, the plan prioritizes the movement of people over vehicles by integrating active transportation facilities. Attracting streets, uh, streetscaping and green infrastructure to improve multimodal tr- uh, travel along the stormwater management features. The plan also seeks to increase connectivity through pedestrian and bicycle networks. Enhancing fifteen-minute walksheds and the ten-minute bike shed. And supporting the county's vision, uh, Vision Zero efforts to eliminate traffic-related faci- fatalities and serious injury. This slide shows the proposed street classifications in urban street design standards recommended for application to key streets in the sector plan area. With a heavy emphasis on the retrofitting existing streets within the local transit center. This slide highlights a major change in the transportation aspect of the West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan. The transportation plan has been reconciled with the ongoing Go Prince George's functional plan. Which involved updating street classifications, notations, and making minor adjustments to the proposed right-of-way whiffs. A key change resulting from this update is the proposed rezoning of the Washington Gaslight Property. Which has led to the proposed upgrade of Chilum Road from a neighborhood connector to a mixed-use boulevard. Okay, so this slide will outline a major change in the bike and pedestrian plan. Uh, the proposed T two oh eight trail through Wamadas property has been deleted. Following a request from the Parks Department due to the extreme slopes and other physical challenges associated with this route. Additionally, the, additionally, the planned bike lane BL two hundred on Jamestown Road has been changed to a shared use path. This adjustment was made to preserve the large mature trees along the road. Ensuring they are not affected by any potential right-of-way widening that would be needed to install bike lanes. Neither of these changes are in the city of Mount Rainier. However, the third draft continues to carry forward recommendations from bike lanes or shared use paths on Varnum Street. Arundel Road and Chilum Road, and among others, to enhance. The existing bike infrastructure network and solidify connections with DC, the Stream Valley Park. The metro station and the rest of the city of Mount Rainier.
So, Justin, can you give me a minute, cause um, our city clerk has alerted us that we have less than five minutes. On the clock for this item, so I'm gonna ask, uh, Mayor and Council to add. Ten more minutes, so that way you could finish your presentation, and then we could also, um, ask questions if need be. So it's a motion on the floor to add ten more minutes, can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any, um, objections? Any discussion, abstentions? Here and now, we have ten minutes added, but uh, Justin, that includes the ten minutes for Mayor and Council to ask questions if need be, okay? So, go, go ahead.
Okay, alright, so, uh, I will just, uh, I will try to hurry it up. Um, so the economic prosperities, as we already noted, does not have any major changes, but we wanna just, uh. Uh, highlight the support local entrepreneurship and minority-owned businesses and develop attractive commercial corridors for resident and visitors. Alright, and natural environment does not have any major changes, uh, but we wanted to highlight these key policies. Uh, to promote sustainable development and green systems for floodplain mitigation and preserve and expand tree canopy to enhance the environment. Okay, so we will start with the housing in neighborhoods. Uh, this one has a major change. The plan aims to increase the quantity, diversity, and affordability of the housing supply to support the initiative. Of the housing for opportunities for all throughout the sector plan. There are four apartments located in this plan area that are recommended for long-term redevelopment for multifamily housing. Out of these four apartments, the Queenstown Apartments is located in the city of Mount Rainier. Okay, so to get to the major changes, the Housing in Neighborhoods section of the sector plan. Has been updated to place a stronger emphasis on anti-displacement and affordable housing. Has been reorganized and expanded with new strategies, including recommending ongoing collaboration. To continue developing anti-displacement strategies beyond the plan's adoption. And connecting residents with risk of displacement with free legal assistance, supporting local advocacy groups. To help renters, address rent increases, and encourage the adoption of the right-to-return policies. For residents affected by redevelopments. And additionally, it calls for a community land trust to be, uh, created and maintained to per- uh, promote, uh, permanently. Permanent affordable housing. And in response to the Maryland Housing Expansion Act, uh, and Affordability Act, uh, this plan includes a new policy. HN four to support increased housing densities around the metro stations for qualifying projects. Okay, and we kinda went over the general goals with the major changes. Uh, just wanted to highlight these four, prevent displacement with the anti-displacement. Increase the availability and preservation of affordable housing, and supporting the tenants' rights as well. Okay, so like we said before, uh, there was no major changes to the community heritage and culture. Uh, oh, I'm, I'm so sorry, there is a major change, and I just wanna, uh, add that for you, that is. Uh, policy HD eight for the Washington Gas Light Company, which is, uh. Specifically, uh, industrial land uses to expand or rebuild on the site. The added guidelines calls for native landscape buffers between non-residential uses and parking areas on Chilum Road. Stream Valley and residential areas. The plan also recommends that all redevelopment should comply with local state floodplain regulations to minimize environmental impacts. And lastly, the plan discourages the storage of liquid gas on the site due to its proximity to homes in open space. And healthy communities, there was no major changes, but we have the key policies here. And just skipping along for time's sake, uh, there was a major change to public facilities, uh. Uh, the proposed Chilum Road Park Expansion and Northwest Branch Stream Valley Park Expansion has been removed from the plan. To avoid the need for MN CPPC property acquisition of mostly private lands. However, the plan still recommends a variety of park, recreational plaza, and open spaces along the construction of the West Heightsville Greenway. Uh, which is shown out on the screen here, and I will turn it back to Sarah to, uh, quickly go over to the anticipated schedule.
Alright, thank you so much, and um, as a point of timing. Sarah, are you doing the final part, or there's something else beyond that, cause I wanna make sure we're cautious of the time?
This is it, um, this is just to reiterate for you all, the joint public hearing is going to be on July first. At the Wenke Curry County Administration Building. Um, and you know, we encourage and welcome the city of Mount Rainier to submit testimony. Um, in support or opposition, uh, to this plan and SMA, um, and we look forward to. Um, reading your testimony if you'd like to submit. And we're here for any questions, and that concludes our presentation, thank you.
Thank you guys so much, and this is the third version of it, the city of Mount Rainier has submitted recommendation in the other two versions. I am so sorry, my voice is in and out, and I need to get healthy very quickly. And, um, how do you call it, we will be submitting also, um, information when it comes to this plan. So Joseph, I'm gonna, um, call upon you first, go ahead.
Uh, I would just say, um, I got to get in the nitty-gritty of the first version of the plan. I got to get into the nitty-gritty of the second version of the plan, now I've been working on the third version of the plan. And I just wanna say how impressed with, uh, how thoughtful, uh, these plans have been. I think that it's gonna be a boon to affordable housing. It's going to help, uh, make the community and the neighboring communities more prosperous, um, and. And, and I know you've put a lot of hard work into this, so, um, we'll obviously be talking in more detail later when we discuss our comments. But thank you again for coming and presenting this.
Thank you so much, and just as a point of reference, it is on the agenda in a later item, the letter we're gonna be submitting with recommendations, so, um. Thank you, Joseph, for like, you know, expediting that, since it's our last meeting, so I definitely appreciate it. Alright, so, uh, uh, Danielle, Jenny?
Thank you, um, I just have, um, I, I really enjoyed the, uh, presentation, I just have one question, um. We got a presentation last year, or maybe it was earlier this year, about the, um, proposed, uh. The county's proposal, what they were gonna do with Queenstown, um, if the owners, um, want to. You know, apply for permits to do any improvement, that that would be denied, and that the ultimate goal of the county was to level Queenstown. And turn it back to, um, park space, is that, and, and I had a, uh. Meeting, uh, about that too, so to get totally clear on what the whole goal was on that. Um, is that still a part of the plan, or has, or is that part of the, uh, changes that, um, you were talking? Cause that concerns me, cause that's a thousand apartment units that are in my ward. So that's why I'm, I'm really curious about that, and if that doesn't have anything to do with this, please let me know, thank you.
That would have been, um, the presentation on the second draft of this plan, so that is a major change in this third draft. Um, the focus is more on long-term redevelopment if the owner ever decides to do that, um, and so. And, and the, the plan no longer recommends acquisition of that property for park space or open space or anything like that. So I think that should, um.
That makes me feel really good, thank you very much, thank you.
And Councilmember, I, I. I was just gonna say, Councilmember, I'd also add, um, that we have added some displacement, um, strategies. So, um, that, uh, we encourage the property owners, if they ever do want to redevelop, to do everything that they can. To, um, preserve the community that exists there and preserve some of that naturally affordable, um, naturally occurring affordable housing. So those are some, also some strategies that have been added to the plan to recognize some of those concerns that you had previously.
You truly made, made my night with, uh, telling me that, cause this has been a very big concern of mine. And I've had a couple of meetings with, you know, some people over there, and, uh, uh, I'm glad that that was heard, and you guys made adjustments, thank you so much.
So we have five minutes on the clock, please try to keep your comments concise to make sure we aren't, we still have a long meeting. Uh, Jenny, go ahead, and then Valerie.
I just wanna say thank you, I appreciate that you, um, balanced affordable housing and, um. And environmental protection, so I thought the plan did a good job of balancing that, and our comments will reflect that, thank you.
Thank you so much, Valerie.
Um, thank you, yeah, I'm, uh, echo what Joseph and, and Danielle and Jenny have already said, I think this plan is, is getting there. Thank you for keeping to come back, um, with us and working with us. Um, I do have one question, it's just about the, the bike lane on Arundel, Varnum, and then continuing. And isn't that on the East Coast Greenway, and shouldn't that be all one consistent bike lane, um? I think it changes at like thirty-second from a bike lane to a shared lane, I just wanted to call attention to that, we can talk about that in our comments, but that was my only question.
The map and take a look, um, but if that is in your comments, that'll be really helpful for us, um, to take a closer look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, um, as, uh, Tony, I see your mic open, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, um, I, I know that you've got an item eleven to discuss your comments, I didn't know if you wanted us to, um, stick around for that. Or if you wanted to discuss that internally as a body, I just wanted to, um, get some clarity on that.
Um, it's an open meeting, you're welcome to stay, you don't need to, but it'll be great for you to stay, so you hear our concerns, and that when our letter arrives. You're able to address it, so regarding the different things that have changed, thank you for taking consideration the stuff that we have submitted. Um, I also wanna give a shout out to Constable, uh, former Constable Jerestopis, who heavily has worked on. Making sure, uh, the lyrics were also sent and cover like our various, uh, concerns, and, um. I think we've had a good partnership where, um, we're very opinionated. We submit our letters and go through the process, and you guys review them, and you guys get back to us if there's something specific on it, but, um. I think it also helps when you have like, you know, the state and the county also supporting, making sure that, you know, the supervision plan is aligned. Like, you know, like it is with ours, in order to make sure we're moving so, towards the same direction, cause I think we all have similar goals. Obviously accessibility, like, you know, transportation, the environment, and make sure we protect our residents, and I think that. As we go through the process, right, you know, this is the reason why when the first, you know, draft came out, you know, we've been very vocal about what to do. Because it's not just about like shouting and yelling, but also like following and working as a team, and that, um, definitely, um. Speaks volumes if you're listening to our concerns and the concerns of other community members, so thank you guys for that, and. You're more than welcome to stay and listen to what, uh, the art, you know. What, what it is, the letter's gonna be read through, so at least you get a sneak preview of what, um, what our letter and feedback is, um, so. And enjoy, and if you guys can stay, uh, the meeting's also recorded, so you guys could like review it for later, but you're welcome to stay with us, alright? So, um, it's nothing else from Council, so I am gonna go ahead and move to the next item. So that we could get through the process and also get to the letter. So we're moving on to the next item, Presentation Discussion from WSSC. Comprehensive Basement Buildup Study in Mount Rainier. Mayor and Council receive a presentation and a proposal, um, proposed concept, comprehensive study by WSSC. To investigate and address basement buildups experienced by Mount Rainier residents. Uh, talking about partners who listen to our concerns, WSSC. So it's been very good at, whenever we have reached out and say, hey, we need help with this. They have, uh, been, uh, reactive, and thank you for bringing this, I see Thomas, uh, Johnson with us, and hello, Thomas. You're definitely not new to our coll-. You're definitely not new to our collective. And uh, I cannot pronounce your name yet, but you're new. So eh, Adolf?
Oh, amen, amen.
Amen. Alright, I will get it, you know? That is something that I will work on. So thank you guys for being here and bringing your presentation and awareness. This is um. One of the many steps that you guys go ahead and cover, which is like making sure you guys come to our meetings, so that we're able to elevate the message to the residents. And at the same time, you know, working in partnership to make sure that residents are aware that this is happening and. Ways in which we're both advocating to make sure to solve the problems that they've been having to have a more um wonderful life in the city of Mount Rainier. Alright, so um, who do I see the floor to and who needs to have the share screen?
So, can you do it for, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Thomas. The floor is uh, the floor is yours, if you wanna say something.
First of all, thank you for allowing us to be here. I bring you greetings. Um, again, Thomas Johnson. I'm the Government Affairs Manager for WSSC Water. No stranger to government, because I've worked with Angela also Brooks's. Um, uh, as the county executive, uh. As the uh Special Projects Manager and Rashere Baker as his Special Projects Manager. And then I went to Larry Hogan as his Special Projects Manager. So I just kinda made a circle, came back here. And um, and I mean, it's an honor. Also bring you greetings from um, our general manager, Ms. Keisha Powell, who wish she could be here tonight. But we just had a really good program for our staff today, staff appreciation. So um, we wanna thank you for this opportunity. If you can allow for him to have the screen share. Um, he'll put the presentation up. But um, I just wanna say that it is, it's very important for us to communicate. First and foremost with you all, um, as the community to make sure um, what we're doing. So any questions that you have, if you can hold them like you did with the other presentation to the end. So that we can, and if we don't have the answers, we'll take it, get it back to you as quick as we can. Alright, because I don't call myself a sub-subject matter expert, SME. Um, maybe this gentleman, but there are some answers that I may not have in here. So we'll do our best to get those for you as quickly as possible.
Perfect. So I'll let you guys go through the presentation and then if you guys could keep um, time on the chat. Because our clerk will go ahead and like, uh, let you guys know when time has like, is coming to an end. So that way you could expedite it, um, okay? And if we need to have more time for Q and A, I will go ahead and add some. But uh, do you have the share capability already or no? Maybe you have, so maybe already gave it to you. Okay, alright, perfect.
So let me, okay, very cool.
There you go. We could see your screen. The floor is yours.
Okay, okay. Well, thank everybody for your time. Um, I'll be doing the presentation on the Mount Rainier Basement Backup Study. Uh, my name is Aiman Dow. I'm the Project Manager. I work in the Utility Service Department. Um, for the, the wastewater assessment system and the planning section. So I'll just be going over the presentation. And remember that I'll answer all questions at, at the end of the presentation. Okay, let me make sure. So the study area, so the study, the location of the study area is Mount, Mount Rainier area in the Northwest. Branch Basin and Prince George's County. The scope consists of two mini basins covering twenty thousand nine hundred and sixty nine linear feet. Of gravity sewer pipes. Um, key data points, this was uh, data from the past five years. Uh, there were for reported BBKs of basement backups, eighty-one incidents, affected parcels, forty-seven out of. One thousand six hundred and six total parcels. And in the scope, it consists of one hundred and sixteen manholes. Okay, so first up, what are basement backups? So basement backups are any overflows that happens in the basement. Uh, most likely it would occur at the lowest level. Um, primarily what causes basement backups is. Blockage in the sewer systems or pipes. It also can affect, it also can correct the heavy rainfalls. But it's normally primarily due to a blockage that already occurred beforehand. Um, it could cause property damage. Odors and health concerns. So why is this study being done? To identify causes of basement backups in the Mount Rainier area. To develop su- solutions to reduce how often they happen and to help protect homes and improve the sewer system. Okay, what this study involves, uh, the first part is the public outreach where we would. Reach out to the community, inform them about what basement backups is, um, gathering. Uh, information regarding best basement backups from selected residents in a form of a questionnaire, uh, inflow. And infiltration detections. Um, this process would be like due with uh, smoke and dye testing. I'll go over there in detail a little bit later. Search our study, analyzing overflow prone areas. Micro modeling where we create simulations to predict how the sewer system will behave. And then followed by that, it'll be recommendations, um, proposed fixes to prevent the backups. And but it, and this will conclude with uh summarizing our findings. Okay, uh, what Phil Crew will be doing, uh, the, this is all the, and like you guys would be physically see. Uh, inspecting manholes, performing smoke and dye tests. That's mainly just to see uh where there's any. Uh, errors or leakage that would happen in the sewer system that's not supposed to occur. Uh, conducting CCTV pipe inspection. That's video pipe inspections where we would just inspect the pipe. Making sure the overall pipe is in good condition and there's uh, nothing that's clogging or blocking it up. Checking for inflow and infiltration as well as using models to guide recommendations. Okay, so currently what we, what we have done as far as notification. We sent out uh, the mayor and city council a letter in May twenty twenty-five outlining the study and field activities. We also uh notified um, some residents about in late May about uh upcoming outreach. And we will um, inform uh residents that would partic- that would participate. And the questionnaire um about uh receiving a basement backup questionnaire. So this is the scope of the work. As earlier, I mentioned, two mini basins. Uh, you can see one zero zero one is the first mini basin. And the second mini basin is one zero zero two. Um, as you can see, the, the blue dots. Those are where the basement backup occurs. The uh, you can see uh, yellow dot. Those are all the work history orders that occurred in that time period and the uh. Uh, rectangle, the red rectangles are the residents in which we plan on. Uh, interviewing, meaning a questionnaire. Okay, and, okay. So this is the, we just took a quick snippet of. Questions that would appear on the questionnaire. Um, this, we would collect this data. To um, see if we can find common trends as far as basement backups, drainage. And then from there, we would use this information to support the field examination and testing within the area. Okay, so after using the data, after co- combine field data, historic BBK and flow monitoring. Um, we would end up putting that into our model and to identify problem areas and can pass it, and. And can, ca- capacity, it, issues as well as um. From there, we will develop target recommendations to reduce backups. Okay, final steps. After we complete remaining fieldwork and surveys, uh finalized an. Analysis and modeling, we will prepare recommendations to um, improve the sewer system in the final. We will share the final report with the city council and mayor. That concludes the presentation to you guys. I would like to thank you for your time. And do you have any questions?
Thank you so much. Um, can you do me a favor while we ask the questions? Can you go ahead and put the map of where um? Or where the locations are at? Cause I'm assuming that's where most of the questions are gonna be headed on. And um. The, the other question is like, is that the complete map? Or is there anything in the south? Cause I only see bunker hill and up. Um, I don't see nothing south of bunker hill. Okay, alright. So, okay, so let me open it up to council and I'll get back to it. Um, someone will cover some of the stuff that I have and I'll get. I'll wrap up the last little bit. Okay? Alright, Valerie, the floor is yours.
Um, yeah, thank you. And thank you for coming to present um, this um, information. I have a few questions. Um, first, I would like to know timeline. Um, second, are you, the questionnaires, are they gonna be translated into Spanish? And English? Um, and then um, yeah, those, I, I'll stop there. Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Okay, yes. So as, as far as the answer, we do have the letters in English and Spanish for the. Uh, residents. Um, as far as currently, in March, we have mainly just been putting. Flow monitors just to um, get information regarding uh rain activities. And we did a few um, manhole inspections. Now, the q- the questionnaire part. Um, it depends on, I guess, the, the feedback that we would receive. But we would like to start uh. The question, the questionnaire um, within uh, the week. And as far as the, for Ju- Ju- July and August, that's when we would be. Expecting to do the smoke and dye test CCTV inspections. Oh, and I just want to make. Make this clear that the um, water will not be affected. Um, all of this stuff, it won't affect um, the community. Only thing that would. May occur if we might have to, like, if it's a manhole in a street, we might have to temporarily while we do the inspection. Um, like block off that particular area. Um, so that's that. And to answer the, the survey. I mean, this should be complete um, by January twenty twenty-six. Um, did, did I answer all the questions? Or did I?
Did it cover everything?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, uh, Joseph?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and thank you, uh, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Dow for your presentation. Also, I think we go back, Mr. Dow. I'm pretty sure I used to email you about uh curb cuts on Route One back in the day. Um, thank, thank you all for all your help on that too. Um. Uh, I had three questions. Um, one, will the, any of the participants, uh, will they be uh provided any sort of. Uh, financial or other compensation for participating in the, the study? Um, the second question was, I saw some of the properties look like they're in Brentwood. I wanted to see if you're also reaching out to Brentwood. And third, um, when you're doing the testing, I'm wondering, will there be any concern about backflows into folks' home occurring because of the testing? Or also any odors um, uh, going into folks' home during testing?
Okay, so I'll first, as far as the testing, um, it is odor free. It's completely safe. We will um, def- we will make sure we notify if that we did test in that area, we'll definitely. Make sure we notify them at least a, a week in advance, so they'll be uh fully aware. Whenever we do uh like CCTV inspections, we normally go out and um, place door hangers in all that area. So that they will, they'll know that we will be doing that. As far as the uh, locations. So all the area now, as far as how they, um, in detail how that they selected the residents. All I know is they target the areas um, where the most activity occurred. So um, and the scope was, was in the two, if, if you can see, I don't know if you can get the, the purple line. Those, that was the scope of the area that was kinda focused on. So if it was outside of that, that's, it was just. The reason why it wasn't included, cause it was just outside of the scope that they, the area that we were like primarily focusing on. And I believe, I think you asked one more question.
Just to follow up, the. The thirty-fourth street there, that's in the, the blue rectangles or blue polygons. That, that is in Brentwood, east of thirty-fourth and. Uh, I always forget it. North of Tilden, no Upsher, I always forget. There, I'm a, I'm a word, so, oh, oh, um, so I just, um. Yeah, so a little bit of that is Brentwood, so I wanted to make sure. Then, oh, and the third question was, um, uh, were you going to provide any sort of?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So at, like I said, at this time, w- we didn't, like I said, we did not plan on. Um, doing that at this time. Um, I can, I don't know, um, I guess talk to. Uh, I guess my team about that, but at the initial plans was, was not to have like any type of.
I know that can help. Sometimes we can focus to respond, especially if, you know, when they're busy, so.
Yeah.
Alright, right, right to make sure you guys stay within your timeframe, guys. Alright, Jenny?
Um, thank you for the presentation. I was wondering, um, depending upon the results of the testing, will residents be told? The results of the testing of their particular properties? And if there are problems. Um, is there any like mitigation plan that they would be informed of? Kind of what, what follow-up? Should residents expect to participate in this? And um, is there a timeframe anticipated for when that follow-up would occur?
Okay, now for specific timeframes, that kinda can vary. But we, like I said, we definitely, especially if you, if, for the residents that per- partic- I mean, partake. In, in the survey and questionnaire, we definitely can provide you with as much uh, information regarding your property. And the, you know, the overall findings as far as, as, as long as. Um, I, we get clearance first from, you know, how department head and stuff like that. We can make sure we share as. Much information to the general public. Also, we want to make sure that this is like the ongoing. We make sure we still continue to interact with the community, cause I know even though the study ends January twenty twenty-six. Um, it, this, the goal is to still make sure that the basement backups, you know, in the future doesn't increase. And just to make sure we have a, a good, uh, we're doing a good job in communicating. With and interacting with uh, the, the residents in that area. So we'll, we'll definitely make sure that um, the information. As much information as we can release, we'll make sure we'll have even pro- provide that to city council and the mayor. And so that would be public information.
Okay, thank you. Cover, cover your questions, Jenny?
I'm done.
Alright, perfect, Danielle.
Um, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate this uh, presentation. When, when I first saw this, I was like, oh, my house is marked on there, but it's not. It's a straight down. So I got a little nervous. Um, these homes, I mean, most of my questions have been asked already, but um. So the ones that you have marked here are the ones that have been involved in complaints or call-ins in the past. Um, what about residents who may have complained? And this is just hypothetical, cause I know I've heard a couple of people, I don't see them on here, who have complained about water backing up in their basement. Um, would there be a way for them to opt in or will this be noted? Will, will it be like advertised in the city or only specifically to these addresses?
Oh, so, okay, so now that part, we're pretty, we can be pretty flexible on. So if there are like residents, as long as they're in the. Uh, mini basin area and they would like to, um, if all they will have to do, if they would just, uh, I can provide you with. My email. And um, I can be sure to include them because we want as, you know, as much um. Participation as possible. So if you know uh individuals that's in the mini basin area. Um, just output about my email. Just email me and I can make sure to in, include them.
Yes, please give me your email, cause I do know two people there inside those lines, um, that I can uh pass that e- your email on to them.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you guys so much for coming. I do have a question. As I stated earlier, I did saw the quadrant includes um. Bunker Hill and up. It's nothing on the south side of the city? Is there a reason why um, it was not included? And when can we potentially uh see? A survey that includes the houses on this side of um, this, this side of the city?
Yeah, now for, like I said, that's, as, that's specific um, question. Um, I'll. Um, I'll, let me get back to you on that, but I can definitely um. See if we can um, include that area for you. Um, but. Why that one was excluded, I'll have to get back to you on that one, but I can make, like, I can. Um, I can make sure to, like, we can make adjustments to include that part as well. Um, but I think primarily when we initially started, they were just trying to. Uh, target the areas where like the most of the basement backups occurred. But yeah, if, if you like to request that, I'm pretty sure that we can make some adjustments to include that area as well.
Man, I'm sorry, yeah, I wanted to speak to that. If you see, I believe that that's part of a different basin. And at this point, in a month, we can go back and look at it, but what I'm seeing is. This particular basin is the one that has been ge- having the most issues. So if that was considered an issue. They would have highlighted that beforehand. So again, that's something that we can address. But I think in this particular basin, this space, this is where we're receiving a lot. And it may also be where it's located. And the flow. So it may catch a lot in that basin differently. In a month, again. You know, I'm speaking from um, what I've worked with in the past, but this is something we can go back and get the mayor some information about.
Yeah, if you guys could do that for me, uh, definitely will help. And I know time has uh, run out. As always, thank you guys so much. And council, please make sure you direct um, addresses and stuff like that to City Manager Rosio, so that way, because Rosio is our point person for W S S C. So that way, they're on the loop and uh, they are informed of what we're sending and um. If any of the residents are in the quadrant, uh, reach out to your council members. Um, and they should be able to like help uh, provide the support and council members like. You know, make sure that it's being sent also to City Manager Rosio, so that they're aware. And that we're like, when they're having conversations with W S S C, we're on the same page and not like randomly here and there. And, um, uh, Mr. Kamali, I didn't call upon you, but time has expired. Do you need me to add uh, more time for you to say something?
No, I just wanna say thank you to the team that, you know, presented this. But uh, you just mentioned the city manager, Rossio. I just wanna let you know that. Uh, Rossio is the Director of Public Works. I don't know if you're talking about our Rossio or?
Yeah, our Rossio.
Okay, so she's the Director of Public Works. She's not a city manager, so I am the one.
I said both, City Manager and Rossio.
Okay.
Because that way you know what um, is being said to the director and you. Um, so it sounded altogether. I apologize, you guys, my throat is like, um. I haven't been feeling too well. I got badly dehydrated. And um, I'm paying the consequences of um, not fully recuperating, going out in the. Wonderful Taylor Street and twenty-nine, they have a beautiful yellow line. And um, that asphalt was like hotter than you could imagine. But anyways, um, I'm, I'm dealing with that right now. Either way, I wanna say thank you guys for being great partners in the formation, um. If you need us to put a little blurb out, even if it's like saying, you know, um, please be aware that um, you know, service are gonna come out to a hundred addresses in Mount Rainier. Let us know so we could best support, like, providing the information. And um, if you guys could also put us in advice as we wrap up. A timeline on the letter summary that you guys send, so people know what it looks like, you probably have also more collaboration with it. And in saying that, I'll let it go, because we ran out of time already, but thank you guys as always. And you guys are welcome to stay. Or go do wonderful work that you do, it's up to you. Uh, but it's always a pleasure to uh, have a conversation with you guys, so thank you guys.
Okay, thank, thank you as well.
Okay.
Absolutely. And for any of you all that will be at M M L next week. I'll be there along with my coworkers, so would love to meet you face to face if I haven't already. Alright, take care.
Thank you so much. Alright, good night. Moving on to the next item, presentation, discussion, and building application for thirty-four twenty-one Newton Street. Mount Rainier, Maryland. The mayor council received a presentation from the owner thirty-four twenty-one Newton Street. In Mount Rainier. And we have our Director of um, Code, Alma Farofino. Hello Alma, how are you?
Good evening, uh, Mayor, um, and Council, City Manager and Residents. Thank you for having me here once again. Um, we are here to do a pres- a small presentation on property thirty-four twenty-one Newton Street. And I see that we have Mr. Nielsen Canengas. Um, he's actually. Done um, other work in, in our city. Um, he just finished, I know, um, a property on Eastern Avenue. So, um, Mr. Nielsen is doing an interior alteration repair and finishing of the basement. Um. Mr. Nielsen? The floor is yours.
Alma, before you go, um, before you go, um, has the county permits been approved? And is there anything this time review board that we need to be aware of?
No, Mayor. So once the um, the permit has been approved by the county. And no request of uh, variance is needed, um, it's done and it's proved.
Perfect. I just wanna make sure for the record, we know that there's no need for a, a. Resign and the county already approved, it's just more of like our internal process at this point. Alright, thank you so much. So, um. Mr. Nielsen, um, welcome back. Um, and thank you for the work that you've been doing in our community. Tell us a bit um, about the project um, that you are gonna be embarking on.
Hey, how you doing? Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the invitation to this meeting. Uh, it's my pleasure to be here. To know all the thing working in Mount Rainier. Appreciate to work it. To the thing in Mount Rainier, working together with me. We did other project already. Uh, we jumping last week to the twenty-four twenty-one. Newton Street.
Okay, tell us what, um, what are the additions, changes that are, are you pro- are you gonna be making, please?
Uh, yes, we only make the interior renovation. We only make some addition in, in the first floor, in the basement. Uh, we don't make anything outside, just change the, the roof, the siding, windows, door. That's what I will do it right now. I don't get here, you, you.
Sorry. Yes, I apologize. I moved my screen and I didn't realize. So thank you so much for uh, those comments. So I am gonna ask. Although you're doing interior uh, work, I am gonna ask council member, um, Jacuta. To give you our spiel that Alma already gave you, but we also like to do it for the record. In order to make sure you are informed. So Joseph, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you for presenting this, Mr. Canengas. I hope I said that right. Um, uh, yeah, I want, I know this is probably old hat for you, but I want to remind you of a few local rules so that you can be a good neighbor throughout your project. You probably heard what I will say from code enforcement. Um, first, we do have a news noise ordinance, uh, section ten dash one twenty-one. So please limit construction activities to eight AM to eight PM to avoid violating, violating it. Second, we do have a tree ordinance, section twelve B dash seven, that protects private trees fifty-six and a half inches or more in circumference. Measured at four and a half feet above the ground. If you plan on doing anything with a tree that size, even if it's in bad condition, you must talk to code enforcement. You also need to make sure prunings are reviewed. Finally, care should be given when digging, moving, and grading soil to prevent stormwater from running into a neighbor's yard. And when in doubt, call Alma. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So the, the, the big point of that is there's plenty of rules that protect our, our trees and our environment. And in doubt, you always, um, you always call Alma, our code um, Director. Okay, uh, council is there? I'm gonna, do you guys have any question for Mr. Dominguez? We're good. I see now Danielle, Jenny, we're on, no, Valerie, you're good as well. Joseph, we're good. Okay, so Mr. Dominguez, thank you so much for continuing work. Um, with the city of Mount Rainier, we're having our, our homes beautifully and um, we look forward to seeing the final project and um. When in doubt, uh, reach out to our co-director, um, Alma Farofino, um, for advice and follow-up in order to make sure, um. You have your questions answered. And Alma, he should be able to go tomorrow to pick up his city permit. Am I correct on that?
Yes, Mayor, we have it ready.
Okay, thank you so much. And please extend the thank you to your whole entire team. Alright, so, um. So have a, good night. You're welcome to stay with us or um, go on your merry life as well. We're okay either way. Okay?
One thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Remind him that they close early tomorrow because uh, of the holiday.
That is so true. Thank you. So, Mr. uh, Nielsen, um. Make sure you're there in the morning, because they, uh, we're closing city offices two hours early. Okay, so before three o'clock, the offices will be closed. Okay?
Thank you so much to let me know.
So, perfect. If you could go before noon, it'll probably be better. Alright, thank you, uh, thank you, Joseph, for reminding us about that. And to um, the residents, we, we are closed tomorrow two hours early and then the next day as well in. Uh, commemoration of uh, Juneteenth, we are closed the full day, okay?
Thank you so much to all team in Mount Rainier to explain me how this city working. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Alright, perfect. Moving on to item number six, proclamation for Juneteenth. Yeah, correct. Um, okay, alright, so can you put it on the screen, Mayor, uh, beneath the school? Read the proclamation. Valerie, you wanna go ahead and read it?
Sure. Proclamation declaring June nineteenth, Juneteenth in the city of Mount Rainier. Whereas Juneteenth has come to symbolize for many African-Americans what the Fourth of July means for all Americans, freedom. It serves as a historical milestone, reminding Americans of the triumph of the human spirit over the cruelty of being enslaved. And whereas Juneteenth is one of a number of Freedom Days celebrations, uh, commemorating the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation of eighteen sixty-three. And celebrates the notification of the last slaves in Galveston, Texas by General Gordon Greinger on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five. Almost two and a half years after President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas Joseph R. Biden Jr. declared June nineteenth, Juneteenth, a federal holiday in twenty twenty-one. And the city of Mount Rainier first proclaimed June nineteenth as Juneteenth in twenty twenty-one. And whereas throughout the nation, Juneteenth is a celebrated annually, uh, celebrated annually and as a historical memo- memorial tribute to the. To our country's African-American history, heritage and. Whereas the city of Mount Rainier is proud to join our nation in honoring Juneteenth in an effort to promote and enhance the unity and spiritual, spiritual strength. That brought African-Americans out of being enslaved and sustained their dignity and prosperity to the present day. And whereas flying, flying the Juneteenth flag on June nineteenth, um, symbolizes the city of Mount Rainier stand on inclusion, equality. And equity in its celebration of diversity and support for the civil rights of the African-American community. And now therefore be resolved. Um, the mayor of Mount Rainier do hereby proclaim that one, June nineteenth is declared Juneteenth in the city of Mount Rainier. Two, the city of Mount Rainier esteems the integral role of the African-American community in the economy, culture, and identify. Of the United States. And three, the city of Mount Rainier urges residents to participate in appropriate programs and activities. To celebrate the contribution and culture of the African-American community.
Thank you so much, Valerie. There is the proclamation and the flag is already up at City Hall. Outside City Hall, um, it was placed on today. So although, um, the nineteen is until the, um, what's the, uh, two days away? It's already up at City Hall. Alright, thank you guys so much. Now we're moving on to the next. Uh, we're moving on to discussion of mayor and council priorities. The mayor and council will have a discussion on their priorities. Um, just as a way of background is, um, wanna say now, eight years ago, right? Um, when, um, the, you know, when, um. When the dinosaurs used to walk the earth, right? Um, Luke, um, and I were new to council. Um, we, uh, Luke decided to come up with a concept of making sure the mayor and council will discuss the three priorities. That they, um, that we share, you know, in order to figure out where uh, points of interest were. In order to figure out also uh, how we move forward for the year. We are fully aware that there is a thousand things you might do between now and next year. But this gives time, um, for a couple things. One, for us to refocus on what the year looks like. Make sure we give like some guidance to the staff. Make sure if there's anything legislative, um, we also give guidance to our, um, you know, consultant team. And working on it. And this also helps to figure out, um, what do we envision the next year to be. So we asked, um, um, council members to come up with three and we stay at three. If you come up with a list of twenty, I will cut you off at three, right? And if you, uh, could have your wish list for something else. But the idea is to figure out what projects realistically we could do within the year. Right? This is not, um, this is not a, a sense of like. My imagination is to have a billion dollars at the end of the year, right? Realistically. Because uh, we try our best to make sure that uh, we stay within that realm. And mind you, um, so. That's more or less a little bit of background. So, and originally we still have a tr- a whiteboard. Where like Luke used to draw it off and stuff like that, then we went virtually, right? But, um, Valerie, if you could help us along, obviously with Melissa, Kamali like to take notes and see what patterns we have. That definitely will help. Um, again, it's up to three. You don't have to have three. But we try to match as much as we can, um, the things that, uh, we look like, uh, what we wanna work on, on this year. And um, that doesn't take away of the building projects that we all have and the city has to run through. Um, the previous years heavily, the number one has been uh, funding for Pots Hall. That's been in the top of the list uh, for the last few years. And that included like the planning. Thank you so much. The planning and securing and everything else that, um, lead us to where we are right now with a building that is like, you know. Um, almost completed, right? But it took several years for us to like, you know, work one year and, you know. Work on redesigning the design, right? As an example, because the Pots Hall project used to be the five buildings coming together. And that price tag will have been easily, easily, more than, um. Five hundred million dollars to be able to do the project, because it was connecting all the buildings, connecting the alley. Creating like ADAs and elevators all over the place, eleven now, so it gives you a sense, right? So what the council decided back then was basically like to cut it into the main building, uniting, um, the. With the existing City Hall building, right? And a little bit of time every year, we were like working on funding, working on architecture, going to sign. In the last few years, what you have more or less have heard has been more like the funding end, because the sign and everything else was covered in the previous years. So that gives you a little bit of historical, um, background. This is not a debating night on it. It's more of, um, this is, this is what you think, you know, this is what you see, like, you know, um. The points of priority, then we'll figure out. And it's something, it's not in the list that you eagerly wanna work on. You know, um, there's a process to work on it, right? So that's more or less what it looks like, um. And we try to survive with what, you know, to what the chart is and the limitations that we have and don't have, right? Um, we might decide, you know, this is what we wanna do with zoning, right? We don't have zoning authority, but like, as an example, it could be, you know, we would like to put gen- uh, legislation forward to support that, right? Somewhere along those lines. So realistic, as realistic wishes as we can think. Alright, so saying that, I'm gonna basically call upon you guys. Um, and just give me what, um, what they are, okay? Um, do you guys have any questions about the historical, the process? Um, or we're good? We're good, just thumbs up and we'll move on to like what the priorities of, of our. I see Joseph, you're good. Danielle? Good? Uh, Jenny, good with that? Because that we could move in, because I love you all, but there's only so much I could talk for tonight. Alright, perfect. So Valerie, I see in the top of the list, go ahead. You're muted, Valerie.
Yeah, um, sorry about that. I didn't, I just, uh, um, okay, so yeah, for me, it's a strategic plan for the city. Um, let me see, strategic vision and plan for, for, the, plan for the city as a whole.
That's a lot of writing for like five words.
Sorry. Uh, restarting the home repair program, I think would be good. Restarting that and finding funding for that, I think would be a good. Um, and then gateway, CDC, continue to build. Uh, impact. Those are my three.
Okay, Joseph?
Uh, so my first two stem from the zero waste, uh, not the zero waste, the Vision Zero Plan. Um, the first is to, uh, ensure, uh, a plan. Five words is hard. Uh, a plan for LED streetlights. Second is to uh to uh. Have a robust stop sign camera network. And then third, uh the third one's separate, um and this assumes how how things transpire with our next conver- I think it's our next conversation. About committees, I'd like to uh revitalize the green team.
Alright, I'm gonna go at the end, um so you could skip me, uh Jenny?
I would like to um utilize city-owned buildings to support small businesses. I would like to um create a vision for the use of Pots Hall. Both internal and um the area outside of Pots Hall.
Remember, try to stick to five words, if not, this is gonna become paragraphs.
I'd like to support the um creation of the strategic plan.
Okay. Thank you. Danielle?
Um, I wanna find that billion dollars you referred to. Joking, um uh you mentioned a couple of years ago about rebranding and I think we um. We left that on the side for some other priorities, I would like to um. I'd like to revisit rebranding the city um that the mayor discussed a couple of years ago, I think that was a great idea then, I think it'd be a great idea now. Um, I want to focus on trying to find a. Why am I getting a warning here about my? No, I'm not speaking anything other than English, thank you, um. Uh, I want to uh look into the safety situation. Um, the public safety situation with the uh traffic circle um and the bus depot area.
Um. Danielle, wait, wait, wait.
Yes.
Hold on, let give her time to to write, so public safety around the circle and.
Yeah, bus depot, yeah, but just that general area in front of Pots Hall, which I guess could kinda like. Connect on with Jenny's vision for Pots Hall too, and then.
Number three?
Um. Oh, um number three, uh finding uh and uh developing liaisons in the different uh. Uh groups in the community uh to the council. Or giving voice to the community, either way. To council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that if for me, I'm gonna just sum it up into one, it's gonna be the strategic vision and plan for the city. And that should cover, you know, the, you know. That covers everything else, most of the things that you have talked about when it comes to rebranding, that falls right into it, because if you don't have a vision and a plan. You're not gonna rebrand anything, so that was the piece that was missing. Right, when it comes to utilizing old buildings to support, whatever it is, same thing, it goes under the strategic vision. So what is it that it looks like and what buildings that we have that could potentially be led to that? I think it's that for maybe what Pots Hall, right, um you know, if it's a rehabilitation of the green team, same thing, right? What, how are we realizing the green team to be able to meet the um, and I'm gonna give you guys this, I'm just giving you guys an overall. When it comes to reassessing the green team, it has to be tied up to something and it goes back to strategic and ambition, okay? So I think that it's fair to say that strategic vision and plan for the city is gonna be our top priority for this year. And a lot of the number twos, number threes and whatever we have up here fall into that. Once we get the vision, the plan, the strategy, uh recreating the the support. The vision for the buildings, um when it comes to safety, when it comes to street, all of the above, alright? So that more or less looks like, because the rest of it, it looks like we're all over the, we're all over the the map. So, let's get the strategic vision plan. Move through and then everything else that you guys have put in the list will fall and tied up to that. Because we have a thousand plans in the city and I need to make sure we link them together. So if we wanna talk about the home repair plan, what does it looks like in the vision and where where would it fall? When it comes to gateway, same thing, when it comes to uh the sign cameras, network, safety, plan, LED streets. Same thing, that sounds like, that's a lot of public works and green initiatives. When it comes to put it up, I don't see uh Danielle's and I think I covered Danielle's as well. When it comes to rebranding Danielle, if we don't have a mission and vision, ain't no rebranding happening, because if not, we'll get stuck with a flag that has no values attached to it besides. A change of color, so strategic vision plan for the city should be able to cover. Everything you guys have put in the list. I think that'll be like the overall um heading. And then we could figure out what is the the next points that you guys each have, because something, none of the other ones match with each other.
Yeah, Mayor? Um, thank you, um I think. The strategic plan, vision and plan for the city is the top priority, but I don't think that hinders our ability to go after working on a robust stop sign. Plan, um you know, in the fall, when when we get approved for that. Um, if we get approved for that from the county or, you know, other things that can work on the sides, but tie into the strategic plan as well, just wanted to say that.
Let me ask you guys something then, what are your other two priorities? Cause if not, if you guys wanna make a stop sign, it could be stop sign and then fill in what the last one is, right now, I'm trying to. Okay, do me a favor Valerie, anything that has to do with strategic vision and plan, put a highlight it differently so we figure out what we have left. So you see as a strategic vision, so just um. Rebranding shows to fall under that one as well. Pots Hall, yeah. So what do we have left now? Don't don't uh, I was gonna say um, just make sure you give a copy of Melissa so she don't have to rewrite it, but what do you have left after that? The strategic plan seems to be in at least three. Three, four, three? So that is under a strategic vision and plan? Okay, so what are we left with? Is, let me see, I think everything in your fault is under strategic planning, how are we gonna tie it up to the city? And um, go ahead.
I would say transportation improvements, that could be a second priority, since we do have the safest streets for all and that could. But but this could be number two, if we had to have a two.
So pull that one out and that way, that's where the LED streets, stops, cameras and everything else that is. Transportation really should fall into, thank you. So I think that covers, I think most of it. But again, guys, it's like although it's number two. The transportation improvements have to be tied out to the strategic vision and planning, because we're just not gonna plan for. The SS4O brand, but what it looks like in the grand scheme of, cause SS4O covers a lot of the city. But still, there's so much of the city to cover and you guys all know, because you guys get plenty of um stuff, okay, what else do you? What else do you see like this? And remind and remember, not every item that is placed in there is gonna go into the list. I think those are the two headings, like transportation improvement, strategic planning, right? And then how do you call it, um? And then from there, like, you know, the staff could work on what else, because I'm pretty sure they could tell you a thousand things that fall under those two as well. I think that is part of strategic vision and plan for the city, it was done. I wanna say the last, when the last one I saw was twenties, maybe twenty sixteen? Maybe around that time, that's the last one I even remember seeing at um at any point, Danielle, what is it?
Um, the um, the safety of the traffic circle, wouldn't that go under the um strategic uh and bus stop area? Wouldn't that go under the strategic vision and plan as well?
It's right there. Where do you have it, um? External and internal. Obviously, postal, internal, external, that includes, that's that's she, Valerie's trying to minimize it to like three words or less. Right, so that was like clear than it is, but anything surrounding Pots Hall, that's what it means, and the circle's like literally in the in front of Pots Hall.
Okay.
So Valerie, do me a favor for rebranding, just put strategic vision planning, including rebranding, oh but leave right there, doesn't matter. Because that that all ties up, once we have the vision and the plan. And you know, that will allow us to work on the mission for the city and every and all those little details uh that come out of it, Mr. Kamali, go ahead.
Yeah, just wanna let you know that uh in the second category, transportation improvement, SS4. Includes the stop sign and the sidewalk improvement, those are the projects that are incorporated in SS4A. And right now, we're waiting for the county to approve the stop sign request locations. And the sidewalks improvement, we have two million dollars in SS4A. Which I'm working right now on to come up with the list and hopefully this summer I'll be starting that project.
Alright, perfect, thank you so much, uh Joseph, go ahead.
Um, for number two, I was gonna suggest instead of saying transportation improvements, say. Implement the uh completed Vision Zero Action Plan or something like that. Because we we already do have a plan that was, I believe, voted on, certainly completed by Tool Design. Um, uh that's already in existence, which obviously this, I do think the strategic plan, you know, needs to mesh with. But it uh it is something that we have on the books, uh and I had just picked a couple of items from that. Uh plan that I think were the most important to me.
Perfect, thank you for rewarding, um because that way, because notice I will start minimizing numbers, I think for even for number one, strategic vision planning. Which includes mission and everything else, so there you go, so number one, you could like. Basically delete the rest of it and just leave it as that and or leave it as whatever you guys want, but that what we minimize on it because. Let me see, so. Do me a favor, um Valerie, just put number one and number two on their own. And you could leave that summary of of it on on the bottom, so that was like clear into the point. Okay? So um with some of this stuff, it's like we could have a conversation later on, but right now. I think that with with everything that's going on and mind you, I wanna make sure that um. That we um, okay, we're not gonna add any more things, guys, because at this point, we're gonna be like here forever in a day. Um, so, mind you, I want you guys to be also with the mindset to be very flexible. Because with the current um, everything that's going on on in the world. This plan might sound beautiful, and I'll tell you, four years ago, we had like stuff that we still managed to do as much as we can out of it. But a priority became everything else slash survival, you know? The priority number one became survival of a residence, period. So although more or less is what it looks like, we're gonna do our best to follow through with it, thank you guys for bringing your points and your input. And um staff, uh city manager. Um, this is basically what our priorities uh look like now with um. Um, number one being a strategic planning, two, the. And I'm sorry Valerie, you moved, it got moved before on it, go ahead and read them Valerie. Just the one, two.
Yep, so the priorities for the FY twenty-six council uh would be create strategic vision, mission and plan. Um, two, implement completed Vision Zero Action Plan and three, economic development.
Yeah, and with the caveat that two and three are gonna be tied up to the plan, they're not just like islands on their own. So that we are like, something that we have worked very hard, um you know, was like the Wacomou approach to be stopped. That has like, you know, allowed the city to move per move where it needs to be and be able to save us a lot of money instead of um. Here's what it is and run with it, you know, alright, perfect, thank you guys so much, alright, moving on to the next item. Okay, um we have discussion and residency requirement for the city of Mount Rainier committees. Will discover establishing a residency required for the city committee stating that individuals must reside within the boundaries of the city of Mount Rainier to be eligible to serve. On our committee. Um, interesting enough, um if this was written somewhere a hundred years ago, we're not sure where it's at. So that's why it is here, my understanding, as long as I've been an elected official even before. Was that um you needed to be a resident of the city of Mount Rainier because you are making decisions. And the finances um recommendations should be the right word, when it comes to uh projects and finances and approvals when it comes to the city. So you do have like skin in the game, because those are your taxes and your city. And I think that uh more or less, that's the reason why, you know, some of the people that have moved have left us as they move, although they were highly qualified, right? Um, because they also understood that, you know, those that contribute to the city in the many ways as as it is, right? Should be able to do it, um we do have a lot, especially for our committees. Um, they are city funding, they are city funded and as a return, they also. Um, send recommendations to fund the many as projects, right, where it comes to murals, when it comes to like um events, when it comes to um. Scholarships and you know, when it comes to X, Y and Z, right? So that's more or less a pass around to you guys, what are your thoughts on it? It is not a voting meeting, remember, this is a work session, it's a conversation meeting, um when it comes to subject. But I think that we need to uh put it in writing and um, if this is what we decide to do, uh we've been doing a lot of um. Organizing and uh making sure that um we are um in line with what we practice, I think that. For many years, we have a lot of practices and we're just gonna work on on agreeing on something here and then. Um, you know, asking our team to make sure they um. They follow through, so we have the right documents to be able to follow through with this, alright? Alright, so I'm gonna go around, give me your thoughts on the subject, please, uh Jenny, I'm gonna start with you.
Just the question of whether um our committees should only consist of residents. I I I believe that they should.
Thank you Jenny.
That's all I have to say.
Jenny's like at nine o'clock, thank you so much for that, uh Joseph?
Um, I I generally am in favor of this, um I am concerned about one, possibly two committees on the list though. With the strict resident requirement, the number one I am concerned about is the bike co-op. Um, while most of the committees, I think, are kind of very focused on just Mount Rainier. Benefiting the residents of Mount Rainier, the bike co-op does have a a much greater community element. And um I um, I know that folks from nearby towns also tend to participate in this one. And uh so I would, I would be apprehensive of that particular committee to have such limitations. Um, but for the rest of them, I I do, and and Tool Shed is the other one that I'm a kind of a little, but we don't, that one's not really active. Um, but uh um I I I am a little concerned that maybe we're not gonna have someone. To run that particular asset if we um limit it, um just uh, you know, given our population.
So Joseph, I wanna make sure it's clear, they are welcome to volunteer, but when it comes to voting power, you know, voting decision is like. Mount Rainier, so be like two different things, and I think with the bike co-op. Um, they usually collaborate with uh the city manager when it comes to like submitting like their budget or their equipment and stuff like that. So it's not in the same capacity to give an example, like the red committee, they have ten thousand dollars, they like. Award in stuff or the scholarship committee and stuff like that, right? So when it comes to the bike co-op, it works differently, so I think that even if we pass this, it will not affect them, because people from other places could still volunteer, right? It's just on it and they don't necessarily vote. It's just on it and they don't necessarily vote, they usually just, Mr. Kamali, can you correct me from wrong? They usually submit a list of the equipment that they need and they volunteer for the location, right?
Right, also mayor and council always have a budget for them. Last year, we had a four thousand and there are uh. And we received some income from them. And uh, we work very closely with them, so anytime they need any parts, anything, they, you know, send their list to me. And we get the equipments and the parts for them, and we haven't had any issues so far, so.
Yeah, so it might not affect them at all, Joseph, but again, this is a discussion. But and then we could like fine tune what is it that it, that it looks like, right? Because people could volunteer, cause we have people volunteering from other, from other cities in our city, as our residents volunteer. In other commit, in other, in many other ways to other cities, right? So it's like two different uh, tiers, it's more of like, you know, especially if they have decision-making power when it comes to money, um, a recommendation to money for the city. That's the only, that's the caveat um, with that. Okay, uh, Danielle and Valerie?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I do um, feel that. Members, especially like you were saying, members that have anything to do with voting or um, directing um, the uh. City funds that they're allotted, um, be residents. I think that we need to do a more robust. Job at um, recruiting. Um, I've actually mentioned to a few people about, hey, how about stepping up to some committees and. You know, they're like, oh, I didn't even think about that. So I think we need to do a better job of recruiting. But I, 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 I would be up to um, um. Discussing things like the tool shed. I know we struggle with the tool shed. I mean, something like that, maybe we could partner with Brentwood, but when it comes to committees. I, I'm pretty um, solid on it being residents, only because of the, of the uh. Financial aspect of it and uh, the um, skin in the game.
Alright, thank you. Um, I think that two shit because we, the two shit, oh my god. The two shit, we need to find a location and two, because the city equipment, so in equipment that has to do anything with tools is not cheap. You know, as we have learned, but also when it comes to if it's damaged, broken, or um, not returned. We have very little recourse if they're not our residents. So that's where the limitation is, is at. Um, so, you know, that's the only thing to con, taking such consideration. Alright, uh, sorry, and uh, Valerie? And Mr. Kamali, um, I'll go after Valerie to you, okay? Go ahead Valerie.
Um, so I generally am in favor of this. I do think like. Like for example, the Gateway CDC has, you know, quote unquote committee members, but they're more of like a board um, from each municipality. So I just wanna make sure that we're being clear that like committee of the city is voting members of the city only. Um, but like boards and commissions might be a little bit different as, as we move forward. I just wanna be clear on that.
I would say that even for boards and commission, it has to be usually for like boards like the Gateway CDC, right? Um, it's usually um, it's an elected official, in this case is your representative, right? So in order for you to run for office in the city of Marinier, you have to live in the city of Marinier. So that wouldn't be a problem too, and also if there's a community liaison. The name that we put forward as, you know, Marinier has to be a Marinier resident. However, like I give an example, the PC, the Prince George's County Development, right? There, they rotate their uh, committee members, right? So every city puts forward like um, the name of like the committee members, right? Each from their cities, and then um, and then to get selected um, every, every other year, right? So in that sense, the board is composed of like, the mayors of the seven cities, right? Um, you know, um, the secondary elected official and two city servants, and so that's different boards than committees. So thank you for the clarification on that, so make sure we're, we're clear. Thank you for pointing it out, to make sure what specifically we're talking about. Cause that's, that's a board that we participate on, but it's not a city committee. Okay, Mr. Kamali, go ahead. You're muted, Mr. Kamali.
Yeah.
You'll be hanging around with me, you'll see what happens. Go ahead.
Uh, I just wanna say thank you, but for your information. The building that we have on thirty six oh one Bunker Hill Road, the top floor is used by bike co-op, but the lower level. Right now is used by Tool Shed. They have some stuff over there. And Kathy is in charge of that, so they're using the low level. And you know that we spent so much money on that building two years ago, so. And uh, that's, that's the only information I wanna share with you guys. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you for that. Alright, guys. Food for thought, I'm hearing heavily on the side of um. You know, making sure we make a distinction between the commissions and stuff that we're part of. Making sure how do you call it that um, we make um. Hold on, I do have a question. Hold on Heather, let me just wrap this, this statement out before I go ahead and like. Um, answer your question to the best of our capability, right? And making sure how do you call it, um, when it comes to like at least for them to realize this, like they have to be part of the city no matter what it is. Alright, um, Heather, you have a statement that says, how can the city encourage residents to get involved in city committees? You know, it's interesting because depending the committee, some of them are like more busier than others, right? And some of the committees is just more of like the board. Some of the committees have a lot of membership, but not everybody attends the meeting a lot of it because they work, I'll give you an example, right? Cert has a lot of people that are certified and upon calling, they will answer. But then yet, I will tell you this, cause I love them to pieces, not all of them wanna show up, not all of them like. Are, have the time to show up to the meetings, right? They're more of like call upon us if you need us, right? When it comes to like uh, the, you know, example, red committee, you have various members that are like, you have the board plus members that helped out. And we also have a group of residents that we have been working with that are volunteers at large. That's more or less how could best describe them. They would join and volunteer with us in the multiple things that we do, but they do not wanna be attached to a meeting, attached to a group. It's more of like the city puts an event, we put um, you know, we um, we're working on building up the list, right? But we put an event together and we send it out and saying, hey, you guys wanna volunteer and they basically more or less uh, joined. So, thank you Valerie. It there, there is a link to our page that described the various committee people could submit on it. But I think for the most part, um, like an example, right, um. Uh, LMUTC, right? They have likes, you know, different requirements than other people do when it comes to sign, the sign reboot board. Um, people that are more into architect design are lean towards more towards that committee. And um, you know, for the green team, you have the green team members and expanded members, right? Uh, that help like with the various projects, so you have the community helping when it comes to tree planning or the things that they do. So it's a little bit, it's, it's a little bit of a collective thing, but we also like figure out that there are people that wanna help. More on the event side of it, or more like in the city community part of it, and we call upon if need help. But they don't wanna deal with like um, meetings, sometimes cause of work or whatever. But we'll put the information out again, if people wanna become members of the, of the committees. Um, they're welcome to um, they're, they're welcome to join. But I think it has, uh, you know, has a lot to do with people having a thousand uh, things in their lives. So it's, it's a lot. But also remember that some people do not join because um, if they have grants attached to it. You know, um, they cannot apply to those grants if they're a member of that committee. Because it's like a conflict of interest. So that's what some people are like, I'm out. And they're involved in a thousand things for the city. Alright, so. Okay, uh, thank you Heather. Alright, moving on to the, ooh, sorry. Moving on to item number nine, proclamation for small cities month. We will read the proclamation for small city month. Welcome to small city months, as you guys are aware, um, that. We have how do you call it, um, we have how do you call it, um. Oh, I'm so sorry. We are a small city, we're less than fifty thousand people, that's what's considered a small city. We are part of the National League of Cities and various organizations, right? That's more or less how they categorizes, but even if it was ten thousand and less, we fall under it. Mind you that um, some organizations have it for four hundred, so. This month is this clear, small cities month. I happen to sit in the committee. I know Valerie has also like joined, um, has also been uh, part of the commission for small cities before. I know, so I've also been assigned to it, but in doing that, part of the things that we do to. Highlight the wonderful thing being a small city is put proclamations together and this is it. So Valerie, can you go ahead and um, read through our wonderful um, proclamation? That's gonna be once read, read, it's gonna be submitted to the National League of Cities, um, along with the hundreds of thousands of. Proclamations that um, that are being um, done this month through all over the nation. Go ahead.
Okay, proclamation, National League of Cities declaring June as small cities month. Um, whereas small cities and towns under fifty thousand population are uh, home to millions of Americans and constitute of the vast majority of. Municipalities across the United States, and whereas the city of Mount Rainier is a small city with under ten thousand creative and innovative residents. And where small cities and towns strive to strengthen their communities through the provision of services and programs to improve the quality of life for all citizens. And whereas the city of Mount Rainier is a member of the National League of Cities with Mayor Benitez being an appointed member of the NLC Small Cities Council. And whereas the federal government is an essential partner in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to support programs. And legislation that strengthens small ci- small communities and where state governments are partners in the success of small cities and towns. And must be encouraged to continue to support key programs and legislation that um, strengthen communities. And whereas organizations, businesses and citizens are partners in the success of small cities and towns. Must be encouraged to continue to grow their efforts to make small communities a viable choice for people to live in. And whereas during the challenging economic times, the need for renewed intergovernmental partnership. To support essential public services is more important than ever to ensure the safety and growth of small town America. And whereas the National League of Cities President and the Small Cities Council of the National League of Cities have declared June as small cities month. Now therefore, I, Mayor Benitez, um, do hereby proclaim June as small cities month and encourage. Other municipalities, congress, state governments, organizations and businesses and all citizens to recognize this event. Um, and to work together this month and throughout the year to invest, to invest in small cities and towns to better the lives of all citizens.
Thank you so much Valerie, as there is, as the proclamation reads. I think that um, I don't think most people realize how many uh, small cities are over the nation. But um, some of them are like little tiny villages uh, of like twenty people, five people, right? But they have organized to be able to um, become an incorporated area one way or another. In order to be able to, you know, be there for the residents. Alright. So in saying that, that's the National League of Cities, small city, it is proclaimed in June. And um, when we come back from recess, there's a couple of like, I'll continue working on my proclamations during two resolutions, so you'll see a couple of them. Um, so that way, um, being, be in the look that, I just wanted to make sure I didn't do like ten or twenty of them at a time. Alright, so. Happy small cities um, month to everyone and happy to have you as a resident as a small city. Alright, moving on to the next item. Discussion on committee assignments, mayor council have discussion on committee assignments. Um, for those that um, are not aware what it is, which is a little bit interesting, but. Um, the city of Marinier, uh, when they had a very, 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 very small staff. Um, heavily depended on council liaisons in order to help. Uh, guide the committees in case they needed um, information and resources. That need, um, we still are liaisons today, but it's more like if need be. Um, because they all have um, they all have um, city liaisons and. City liaisons that are trained in the various fields, like an example like the tree commission, right? Rosio is a tree roadside expert, I think that's the right name of it, right? And so, you know, our job is definitely with the committees not to mandate. Um, tell them what to do, I think it's more of like, we're here if need be. And that's something that maybe in the future, the council might need to revisit, uh, because the need for us to be part of a liaison. It's no longer the same need that was um, originally, uh, needed. Uh, when um, when the committees originally started and we have grown also in. A number of committees compared to what, what it was, right? We have done our best also to um, professional, professionalize the committees. And where we have um, applications, you know, like resumes submitted to the city portal, so that way we know who are the committee members. And we're more or less like, you know, in touch with um, who it is that before, um, it wasn't as organized, um. But at least this also means that um, as we rotate people in and out, the city has that information. And the link is not lost because it's linked to the city directly. So in saying that, um, the committees, we basically go through the list, it goes by seniority. You pick uh, what committee either you're keeping, if there's one you don't want to, um, you don't want anymore. Um, you um, put it into the pot, right? Uh, there's two things I definitely wanna point out. MRBA is no longer a committee, so be off the list. Um, AFAS also off the list. Um, PGGCD, um, that's included on it, but that one's a specific because. The legislation that was created for that, um, it's not a city committee. For, we know them in, in case like let's say for Gateway, like Valerie's our representative, right? We know them, so that way they know um, who has been placed on that one, so that one, but. By legislation of the state of Maryland, the mayor um, of each city, in this case like seven cities for Marinier holds that seat. So that's um, state law, there's no way around it, um, I, I hold that seat. But um, that's one of the few ones that are on it and. There's some of them, we're gonna have to reevaluate whether or not we wanna continue working on them or keeping, or they've served their purpose. Or figure out what uh, what it looks like, but I think the bigger discussion for council eventually be like, is there a need for us to have um. For us even have like council liaisons to them, or just keep them to um, stop? And we'll have the conversation later time, you know, uh, the other thing is like to point out to be clear. The Ethics Commission, although exists for the city, we do not have a liaison for it. Because uh, that is where uh, Melissa as our clerk, um, is the point person for it. And our city attorney is uh, those are the points of reference for that committee. The Elections Committee is another one that has no liaison. Um, because it is a neutral body that deals with our elections, so therefore we do not interfere with them. If their point of contact once again is Melissa and our city manager and our city attorneys, that's who they work with. Um, in order to um, be able then if we need to change any legislation, it comes through, through them, through us, but there's no liaison for them as well. For um, also obvious reasons, right? So that, those are the two committees that aren't, are not on it. So let me read through some of them that are on it, so. The other one is the Unaccustomed Troops and Historical, so that one is off the list now. Um, because the board and uh, Valerie, um, the board is no, they no longer have a board, so there's no longer a, a need for us to. Occupy a seat as Marinier in the board. Correct, Valerie, can you like, uh, word it correctly, because um, you used to be our liaison for the board?
Um, so I was not the liaison for this board.
I'm sorry.
The managing board, the, the managing board is not a, an appointed seat, um, it's a regular nonprofit board. And then the um, um, the governing board is changing, um, and so there's not. A need for a council liaison at this time, um, although the council is always welcome to participate.
Yeah, so, but we don't need a liaison, so that's gonna be out. Uh, so is it the same for the historic, uh, for both one, um? I see her twice.
Um, yeah, they should both be taken off for now.
Okay, so um, Meli, can you do me a, a favor and just write a note that said, um, that's coming off the list?
Yes ma'am, I can note.
Thank you, and you don't have to put it, cause I know it's hard sometimes to put stuff on the screen, but yeah. So that we know, the other one is MRBA, the Marinier Business Association. Uh, they have uh, dissolved, I used to be their liaison, so I have, I'll be no longer their liaison, cause there is not um. That association at that point, so I wanna make sure at least we take care of at least those two, um, that are done. Alright, so. You made a note of it as well, right Meli? Thank you so much. Alright, so, I have PGCA, my liaison, that's fine, keep going for me. Board of Elections, Melissa, you're still like, there's no change on that, and right, Mr. Kamali? That's still fine, alright, keep going. Perfect, and then we'll update like the members later. The cert, Danielle, you have cert, keep going. LMUTC, that one's uh, open and we just appointed, um, we just submitted the approvals. we just submitted the approvals for the various um, members in this list to represent us uh, for it. Then the next step is for the county to approve them and then they're on. So that's uh, D R B, Design Review Board, so that's Danielle, go on. Okay, Ethics is also here, does Melissa same thing, Mr. Kamali, no change?
No change, ma'am.
Okay, perfect, so the staffing, Mr. Kamali, you guys work on that and I think it's gonna stay the same. I don't see any staffing changing when it comes to the committees, so it should be fine. So there is, oof, there is a couple committees that are open at this point. And um, let me see, Tree Commission, then you have um, let me see, can you do me a favor for Youth and Recreation, can we just call it Recreation Committee? Because it's really confusing. Or is there, is the, oh, the legislation was called uh, Youth and Recreation? So just call it Recreation Committee for right now? Because it's like, it goes beyond just youth, it's recreation period. And I think that most of the events are like recreation open, not just limited to one group or the other. You have the Community Guard and the, the Valerie, go on. Okay, Parking Enforcement Task Force, I don't even think we need a commission, is there a reason why we still have it? Mr. Kamali?
I think uh, Melissa is going too fast, because I just wanna make sure that we see what's going on, yes, please.
Okay, so that one, we don't need it? You know, I think we have a parking enforcement person falls under P D and the city manager. So I don't think that position, that task force hasn't been filled in at least.
How many years?
Maybe eight years, cause I don't remember anybody like, being like assigned on it. I know there was a reason for it, but it's no longer needed, not in the same way it was created. The Scholarship Committee is still there, keep going, um. Arts Commission is there, what is this, oh yeah, that's the members. Uh, Police Advisory Board is there, we need to figure out like, um, what we need to do with that one, and the Vision Search Task Force that is uh, done. That originally was done to um, create the supervision plan. You know, so that is like a, a commission that's off the list as well. Let me see what else is off the list, go ahead. Danielle, is there a commission that needs to be off the list as well?
No, um.
I'm asking you is there, because I'm gonna go back to the top right now. But is there a commission that needs to be off the list, that's what I'm asking, and then we'll go review whatever it is.
No, 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 no.
Alright, so that's all I was asking, so there's a couple of them on it, some of them we're gonna have to review them later. Because um, one, as I mentioned, they no longer serve their purpose. And two, originally we thought it was gonna do X and it definitely, it does not do Y. Alright, so, okay. So as far as for me, so I'm gonna go the first round. You know, um, as far as for me, I'm gonna keep all the ones that I have. And the one that's added was the Prince George's County Gateway Economic Development Committee. I think those are the letters. Um, and I sit on that one and Valerie is um, Valerie is my backup. That's um, so, that's it, but, but usually like, you know, I attend the meetings, so it's not a problem, okay? So that'll be the one that is um, that is added. So can you guys, can you guys just write down the, for next time, we're gonna have to write them down? Because going back and forward on this thing makes it a little bit harder and more confusing, okay? Okay, so at least those are the ones I'm keeping in mind. And um, I'm still thinking whether or not I'm picking anything else that's open, but at least I'm keeping mine, so none of mine are gonna go into, into the pot. Um, Valerie, where are you with yours, you're the next uh, in seniority?
Yeah, thank you, um, I think I would like to keep um, Gateway C D C Recreation Committee, the Community Guarding Committee, such which just formed it, and then I would like to take on the Arts Commission, if it's okay.
Okay, give me one, give me, give me guys one second. Okay, okay, that goes, okay Valerie, so I'm so sorry Valerie, um, give me, you say you're keeping all of yours and adding Arts Commission. Is that it? I apologize, I was having a, a sound back.
That's what I said.
Mayor, I have an issue with that, I actually.
Hold on, wait, Danielle, you're next, Danielle, you're next, hold on. Let me finish talking to one at a time, please. Guys, I don't want this to be into a whole war zone, and we're, we're trying to go slowly at a time. Valerie has the floor, ask for clarity, apologies Valerie, you know, there was sound back on my end, so I couldn't hear you. Okay, alright, thank you Valerie. Alright, Meli, you're making note of this, or, or do you need um, Meli, uh, Meli, you're making notes? Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Meli, alright Danielle, you're next on the list, go ahead. Are you, what um, what, are you dropping any, any committee?
Hold on a second, first of all, clarity on, in the May sixteenth meeting, and I have sent Mr. Kamali a minimum of four emails, including enough today. Luke co-liaised the Arts Commission with me. I have the link, I'll be more than happy to drop it in the chat right now for the meeting and the timestamp. I have, um, I said that I would take it on and you appointed me. You said, alright, you're gonna be the co-leasance, I have the timestamps. I do not want to give up the Arts Commission, however, I would like to carry on the tradition that Luke started. And that is co-liaise it with Jenny. So I would like to keep the Arts Commission and co-liaise it with Jenny. Again, if you need evidence, I'll be more than happy to um, drop the link in the chat or send it an email, but I would like to keep that. Um, I do wanna keep the SIR. Um, I would like to also, when Jar- when Jared, with a T, dropped out of P RAB, P RAB was given to me, I'd like to keep it. And I would like to give the um, Design Review Board to Joseph, I've already spoke to the designer.
Danielle, we do not give committees to no one, everybody decides for their own, so. Can you please, no, we don't do that, they make their own decision, okay? So there's two, so there's two points, Jared didn't drop that committee, I wanna make sure it's clear. He served his term, he, because the way you're making it sound is like he dropped his responsibilities, and I think it's very unfair for us to say that. Please, please stop, please stop Danielle, the mic is not yours, please mute yourself, right? I'm not doing this, it's the last meeting of the year, you know your position and you know for a fact that, one, I do not assign the committees, cause if I were to assign them committees, I wouldn't be having this meeting. I'll just be sending you guys an email telling you guys what committee they're on, so for you to say, I assign you the committee, it's definitely not the way this works. So please make sure that uh, we are very clear on what it is and what it isn't. I as the mayor do not assign the committees, cause if it is, this conversation is done and I'll be assigning the committees and we'll move to the next item. It has never been the mayor who assigns the committee, so please retract what you said because it's not true. Number one, number two, is very important for us to like, remember that we do not have the authority to assign or give it to another council member. They make their own decisions, so for us to sit there and say like, and I'm point, and I'm giving it to the stuff, that's just not the way it works. It goes by seniority and that's the way it's been done for years, okay? So I need to make sure that um, we give the same opportunity to both Jenny and Joseph when it comes to them deciding what committees to choose to and not because it's pounded on them, alright? They chose whatever it is, when it comes to the Art Commission, let's be very clear, Luke said that we have never had co-liaisons on anything, you know, it's been single liaison and it's been backups if backups are needed. Alright, number one, number two, is very important to remember that Luke said that if he was stepping down, he never sent out from the committee. He stayed in the committee as a matter of fact until the last day. So that committee is open for grab if anybody want, cause Luke and Jared no longer there. So we're gonna pass on the next one, you already said you wanna let go of a committee. We're gonna go on Jenny and Joseph, uh, you guys could choose, if there's one of the committees that you see that's open, that you choose that you would like to, please let us know. Raise his hand, so I'm trying to be polite and go to the next person, welcome back to this. So Jenny and Joseph, you guys are next, Joseph, you raise your hand, go ahead.
Oh no, I, I, I apologize, I just wanted to um, say that Danielle and I did talk about this uh, with the Design Review Board, um, I apologize if I had said any uh, um, words in our conversation. Um, that implied that we weren't following any sort of process, but I, I just wanna make sure, you know, Danielle and I did talk about this. And I, I, um, I, I just wanna make sure everyone's on the same page on, on that. So I'm, I'm also not trying to jump in ahead of Danielle if she was still working on hers, but I just wanted to step up and say that, that, thank you.
Thank you so much, I just wanna make sure it's clear, process wise, we do not give the committees to somebody else. Cause if that's the case, Luke left a whole list of recommendations. And it was his take on who suit, we suited better for what committee, right? And we're here at the table discussing the committees, that's exactly what we're doing. So please make sure we abide by what we have um, established in the past, so this is nothing new. Alright, you guys can have all the conversations you guys want, but until we come to the table here, that's when you decide whether or not you wanna keep it or not. But I never wanna put a position for anybody to feel like they need to be able to pick it up because of it, you know? It's up to you, between now and a conversation and, and, and the, and you're here, you could decide whatever you choose to when it comes to the committees, alright? Go ahead Danielle, Danielle, I'm gonna give you the floor, relax, go ahead, the floor is yours now.
I know, I thought you said go ahead and I said, okay, sorry if we overspoke. Alright, well let me get clear then, I'm gonna keep SIR, um. I would like to continue the co-liaise and I do have the evidence and we can do it that another time. And I would like to take P RAB and I will um, give up the uh, Design Review Board. So then my two would be P RAB and SIR, which are appropriate. And um, I would like to continue to co-liaise the uh, Arts Committee, thank you.
So we're gonna put the Arts Commission aside because it's gonna be definitely a different discussion, okay? And but Danielle, um, I wanna make sure you make it clear that I don't appoint people to the committees.
No, you know, you're right, you did not appoint me, you uh, you, Luke said he would like to do that. We had a discussion, I said, um, I took SIR and Design Review Board, cause, and I looked at it today. Um, to make sure I wasn't bringing the false receipts. And you said, okay, then that is what we'll do, and so you're right, you didn't appoint, but it was more of an agreement and you, I guess, blessed the uh, the thing, so, but you didn't appoint, that is correct, I do attract that um, that mischaracterization.
I just wanna make sure it's clear, cause later on it assumes like, I give you guys.
And that was unfair of me, and I'm sorry, I mischaracterized it like that.
And I wanna, I wanna make sure that it is, it is so, so, you know, on it. And also wanted to clear fact, the fact that um, Constable Self-Is Dead finished his term and that's the reason why he's no longer the liaison for the committee, he went full term, okay? Alright, so.
Question, I have one question for you, Selena, um, on the uh, P G C M A, there's the liaison. And you're at every meeting, so it's just, it's technicality, but I go to all the meetings too. Would I qualify for the Backup Council Liaison for the P G C M A in case you would not be able to make it?
At this point, I don't, I don't need, I think the P G C M A is gonna have to be a bigger discussion. So I think that at this point, I don't, I mean, I'm always at, you know, and the meetings that need to be, so I should be fine. So this was only because I was traveling and I couldn't like, you know, potentially make the committees. But it should be fine, but this is definitely how to call it, something that we're gonna have to review. Alright, so saying that Jenny, Joseph, do you have a particular order you guys wanna go to when it comes to the committees?
Joseph, could you go first?
Thank you, uh, do me a favor, uh, guys, since I have both of you guys mics are open, can you guys put a motion on the floor to add more time, please?
I, I will make a motion to add more time, as long as Jenny goes first.
But you have to give me the time, it cannot just be more time.
Um, I, I hope we can knock this out in five minutes.
Okay, five more minutes on the clock. Thank you so much for taking a discussion, objections, extensions, hearing none. Um, the motion has passed, we have five more minutes on the clock, and thank you Melissa. Alright, so Je- are you going next then Jenny?
Um, sure, I'll, I'll, I'll take whatever is left. I, I believe that Joseph has um, specific committees that he's interested in. I would like to work with the tool shed and the bike co-op, um, and I'm happy to work with whatever is remaining. And I, I feel um, no um, need to upset um, Valerie's. Um, I, I, I thank Danielle, um, I am interested in working with the Arts Commission, but I, I do not uh, need to be the liaison for it. And I'm um, perfectly happy to um, to work with whatever uh, committee needs working with that has not been assigned to anyone else, thank you.
Thank you Jenny, so it was the tool shed and the bike co-op, right? If I'm correct?
I believe those are both vacant and I'm more than happy to work with them.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I re-stated to make sure we're on the same page, it makes it a little bit easier as Melissa is taking notes, thank you so much, okay Joseph?
Okay, I will, I will volunteer to be the um, uh, Green Team Liaison, the Tree Commission Liaison, the Design Review Board Liaison. And I guess if ones need it, um, since they're probably very similar, I could do the L M U T C Liaison as well.
Well, that's a lot, alright, so tr- trust me, we're, we're not, it's a lot of extra work. Thank you so much Joseph, alright, so um, can you repeat them again for, for um, for Melissa, go ahead Meli.
Um, the designer, she said the Design Review Board?
Yeah, D R B, L M U T C, Tree Commission and Green Team, Joseph, is that correct? Am I missing on one?
No, no, you're not missing one.
Yeah, okay, alright, you got those, alright, what is left over at this point Melissa? Meli?
I think that's, oh, Constable Mama Jakula said Tree.
Tree, Green, L M U T C and uh. Yeah.
I think that's it.
Okay, so at least the other ones, we're gonna go back to the Arts Commission, but at, at least the other ones already like, I think we got everything down to the, down to the, the ones that we need. Alright, there's a couple of them, like I said, we're gonna have to review and revisit, because if they no longer serve their purpose, I'm not entertaining. I'm not in any way entertaining, um, anyway for us to have more committees that we need if they no longer serve their purpose. They could be um, dissolved and a matter of like paperwork and they're done. You know, there's a reason why we started the meeting with what committees were no longer in use, in order to make sure that we got them out, instead of arguing with this, so. We have the Arts Commission, okay? So saying that, Luke was the primary, he's been the primary of the Arts Commission since twenty seventeen. Mr. Kamali, I see your hand. Mr. Kamali, is your hand raised for a reason?
Yes, I just wanna make sure that, I do appreciate the council are, you know, voluntarily doing the liaison. But we wanna make sure that we receive the information, the minutes, the approved minutes, and anytime they do any purchase. I need to have some information and I do appreciate the council to work with the committee and make sure that we receive those approved minutes before they do any purchase or any actions.
Thank you so much, um, Mr. Kamali, so part of your duties as the liaison are uh, making sure you facilitate and providing the, and you guys don't have to do it yourself, you could just remind the lia- the chairs of each committee to do it, that's part of the things that they do, when it comes to the agenda, the minutes, the approval. Um, there are timelines or planning that they have, so they submit it to the city, consider for the city to be able to pre-plan when it comes to, um, let's say, example, right, events they're having, you know? So if they need support from the city for P D, Public Works, Communication, it's not like, and we need something this weekend, it's more of like, this is more or less what the plan looks like, because we are, um, we do have a lot of events for the city and we do collaborate with other cities and other um, people within our city, right, organizations. It's a little bit easier so that way they don't, we try our best to not interfere with each other's plan, but the reality is like, some months are more intense than others. Which heavily means that um, we sometimes have to do one event in the morning while somebody else does it in the afternoon or vice versa. Or sometimes at the same time, if we cannot, if we try to um, avoid it, it helps even more to um, to make it through. But I think we've done better as a city, you know, but um, there is only uh, sometimes four weekends out of the month. And sometimes we have like ten events, there's nothing I could do about it, alright? So going back, uh, Mr. Kamali, anything else, so, you're good, alright, so the Arts Commission. That was, that's been uh, Luke's commission, he actually created the commission back in twenty seventeen, eighteen, somewhere around that time. You know, so I know for a fact he's been on it because of um, reasons. You know, so I know for a fact he's been on it because of um reasons that council is aware and staff, right? He had assumed that he might have to step down, where I'm very happy to say he didn't have to. And that's the reason why he was looking up potentially like, you know, um putting somebody else to support in case need be. But he has run the committee as uh basically him being that main um liaison for um the various decision collaboration. That they worked on, saying that the Art Commission is very self-sustained. Um so they basically uh collaborate with um with Mr. Kamali and their team directly. Um Lucas always used a very hands-off approach. And you know, that is more or less where all of us are heading and we need to be heading when it comes to our commissions. Because um the commissions are basically leaderships within the organization and we need to be able to respect um. The work that um they do and the final proof usually goes to the city manager. And you'll flag it whether it's like something that is not something the city could do or there's no funding or it's out of far realm. So that is where uh that is that, not um the constant, this is part of the responsibilities of our. Of our staff who are there representing the various commissions of that Mr. Kamali has assigned them. So make sure they always have a Lisa um staff liaison. Anyways, the Arts Commission, right? So Luke was the lead liaison. Luke is no longer with us. We're gonna take the approach that we do with every single committee. It goes by seniority, so in this way Valerie has the seniority over the Arts Commission. We don't have co- liaison on anything. Everything's like a single liaison. Sometimes we get backups, right? But the reality is like we don't, we don't need the backups because the staff is actually the backup on on things. And if something happens, usually they represent us and we collaborate, we need be, but. Majority of the times uh council is not always at the meetings because we have to attend other meetings for the collective and. The staff works incohesively with the commission or they reach out to the staff after in order to be able to get clearance, all right? So that that is more or less where I'm at with this. I honestly, it's nine fifty. I don't want to dwell on it. And I think we have our committees and we can move on to do a thousand more things in the city, all right? Okay, I'll go grab a, sorry, sweetheart. Okay, sweetheart. All right, so moving on to item number eleven. Presentation and discussion letter to MNCPPC. On preliminary West Hyattville Queens Chapel Sector Plan Draft Number One One. Draft number, I'm sorry, draft number three. Um Council member uh Joseph Jakuto presented mayor and council letter to MNCPPC. On preliminary West Hyattville Sector Plan. So earlier today, you heard the presentation that was given about the various changes that uh where there are coming. Um based on a lot of feedback that we have given and I definitely want to thank um the team from MNPPC. Who are still hearing the call, right, um and ready to hear what we have. So Joseph doesn't need to go into presenting the plan because it was already presented. So Joseph, thank you for putting the letter together and um can you go ahead and read it? And uh counsel, um this letter was submitted also in your package, so you must have seen it as well. All right, Joseph, uh go ahead and read the letter.
Thank you. And of course, this is draft, so I welcome feedback, um but uh. Uh dear Prince George's County Council sitting as the district council and MNCPPC Prince George's County Planning Board. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, MNCPPC's. Third staff draft of the West Hyattsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan and Sectional Map Amendment. MNCPC plays a critical role in Prince George's County, presiding over planning and zoning functions, maintaining parks and recreational areas. And offering significant cultural and recreational activities within the county. MNCPC's engagement has been critical for our city. As is led efforts presiding over the West Hyattsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan and Sectional Map Amendment. Plan for the regions surrounding the West Hyattsville Metro Station, a major transit station directly adjacent to our city. That will bring greater pedestrian and bicycle access and more vitality to our immediate neighborhood. The mayor and the council of Mount Rainier appreciate the years of effort that have gone into the study as well as the extensive public engagement. Both with the city itself as well as the outreach to various populations in the community. MNCP- MNCPC's, oh my God, how do you guys say that all the time? Anyway, MNCPV C's plan. Will set the framework of which long-term development and is contemplated for the area covering. Covered by the sector plan, which encompasses not only unincorporated county land in Hyattsville, but also the northern portion of Mount Rainier. Uh this framework recommends maximizing the potential for tra- transit adjacent and pedestrian-friendly residential development. While embracing a sensitive natural environment. As noted in the sector plan, this framework will increase access to transit and regional trail network. Prevent further degradation of the Northwest Branch and of the Anacostia River. Reduce flood risk to residents and provide much-needed housing options that allow a broad range of families, households and individuals to live in the. Thriving, vibrant and sustainable community. While the land in Mount Rainier included in this sector plan is small, the impacts are significant as the plan encompasses encompasses. Large multi-unit apartment complexes, Queenstown, Queen's Manor and Rainier Manor Apartments. Where the majority of Mount Rainier's population who are renters live. Uh the focus on increasing a pedestrian transit-friendly environment is especially critical. As a significant portion of the households in Mount Rainier are no-car households and are transit-dependent. The mayor and council of Mount Rainier would like to offer the following feedback on the plan as laid out. Continue a focus on improving walkability and bikability in the sector plan. Mount Rainian households in the sector plan are generally low in moderate income and very transit-dependent. Most recent census shows a high number of zero-car households and users of transit for work. For work commute in the census tract in Mount Rainier that falls within the sector plan. The plan contemplates improved and safe for street network both within Mount Rainier, but also with the adjacent areas of unincorporated Prince George's County. Where our residents walk and bike to access retail and other institutions. This area is currently bisected by a state highway, Queens Chapel Road, with a large number of daily auto trips, twenty-four thousand plus. As well as commercial areas that are designed for cars traffic only. Sector plan line contemplates narrower streets, slower speed limits, shorter blocks, more public space and traffic calming features. All these changes will drastically improve the pedestrian bicycling experiences while safety. Additionally, as a minor addition on map twenty-nine, uh please add the need for completion of the bike path. Behind the nature center to C twenty-two fourteen, since it currently stops about three feet short of the roadway and thus the planned bike link. We are supportive of the recommendation TM four point one three that will allow for improved crossing of the Rundell Road Levy Trail. Uh which is an important access point to the Anacostia Trail Network for residents of Mount Rainier. Finally, we do believe it is important that the original plans for the reconstruction of Rundell Road, U C two-five-four should be. Should continue to be done as a complete green street as well, as was described by DP WNT during the thirty-first street. Bridge replacement project community meetings and it should be maintained and clarified in this plan. In addition, this work should take into consideration the work that Mount Rainier will be completing on Varnum as part of the Safe Streets for All grant. Beyond that, we are supportive of recommendation TM one point five. Support preservation of affordable housing in Mount Rainier in the sector plan. One of the things that make the community of Mount Rainier so vibrant is our diversity. We cannot maintain that diversity without access to affordable housing. Residents of all income levels should be able to make cities like ours our ours home. We are supportive of the preservation of affordable housing. Believe this plan will do that. Particular, the third revision of the sector plan changes the recommendations for what should be done with Queenstown apartments, given their location in the floodplain. The new recommendations LU five point six act to better balance the needs of the existing affordable housing that's currently in place. And the importance of these apartments for residents who live here while giving care to the need to mitigate floodplain concerns if the properties are to be redeveloped. Another aspect of of this preservation is continuing to be supportive of our mixed housing style in Mount Rainier. We are supportive of the addition of recommendation LU ten point three to preserve the neighborhood conservation overlay. Overlay zone in Mount Rainier. Support increasing affordable housing and commercial stock with zoning improvements. On the other side of the equation, when it comes to affordable housing for residents live in and affordable commercial spaces for small business, increasing the stock of those types of. Assets is key. We are supportive of allowing for small and fellow growth and believe this plan helps there as well. Recommendations LU three point one and LU ten point four are particularly important for improving zoning in our community. Allow for the increase in affordable housing stock, especially in light of the recent passage of SB eight ninety-one dash slash HB fourteen sixty-six. Requires counties to adopt the authorization of accessory dwelling units. Which are found to be an empowering way for small homeowners to provide small additions to housing supply and also for a more diverse community. While the section of Mount Rainier was changed in map eight was middle, we are grateful to see such forward thinking. Also, the recommendation LU nine point one is to place the properties along Varnum Road in the CN Zone. Which will be beneficial to activating the K Wood Shopping Center, as is the recommendation HD six point five to preserve it as a unique architectural asset. Supportive of improvements of the Mount Rainier Nature Center. The Mount Rainier Nature Center is a vital asset for our community. It provides an excellent educational opportunity for young people in the city and acts as a congregating space for events to bring all people in the community together. Making the nature center more accessible and sustainable is a high priority. We are supportive of recommendations TM four point nine that would increase sidewalk access to the nature center thirty-first place. And E four point two, which would prioritize green infrastructure projects as part of the nature center renovation. PF two point three that would expand services and programming at the nature center. Adjust sector plan to align with Mount Rainier's Vision Zero Plan and Safe Streets for All Projects. Twenty twenty-three, the Mount Rainier Count- uh Mayor and Council passed legislation on March twenty-second two twenty twenty-three. That will create the Vision Zero Task Force to adopt a goal of eliminating traffic deaths and serious injuries in the city by twenty forty. The city completed the Vision Zero Study that contemplated the redesign of the entire city street network to ensure a safe experience for all residents. In December twenty twenty-three, Mount Rainier was the winner of a nine point seven million dollars Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant. From the US Department of Transportation, city will embark on a five-year program of projects. To build safer pedestrian and bicycle corridors throughout the city. Finally, as part of these efforts, the city also passed an ordinance to lower its speed limits citywide to twenty miles per hour. The sector plan does call out, call out this work in Mount Rainier. But in map twenty-nine appears to rely on historic county-wide bike network plans and other older documents. The MNCPC can align its sector plan with Mount Rainier's contemporary Vision Zero Study and pending infrastructure investments. Which in turn is aligned with the DC Department of Transportation and will ensure a more continuous experience for all residents and travelers through the community. This plan is attached as part of the submission and we encourage continual engagement with the city of Mount Rainier as we implement our five-year program of projects. Thank you for this opportunity again to provide input. Your support has enabled Mount Rainier to thrive in a vibrant and welcoming place to live, work and play. We look forward to a continued partnership between our community and MNCPC. We are grateful for your support.
Thank you so much. So you guys have heard the whole letter. Um there is a time where we need to send it. That's the reason why Joseph like hurry up and make sure that it was in this meeting. Uh the way it works, basically you guys read the letter, you have any point sent, but this letter should be going out before we leave to um. Before we leave to how do you call it, uh Toshan City this week, so that we get it to them. All right, so. Counsel, um so Joseph, thank you so much and we do have um Sarah still here. Um any feedback regarding the letter for Joseph? Um that you have right now? If not, I'm sure you guys want to spend until midnight like reviewing the letter again and sending any feedback. It was added to your package. But if not, we'll move forward and the staff will put in little in in city letterhead. Sign it and it'll go out via email and mail. That's the next steps for the process. Danielle, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um I just want to thank you, Joseph, for putting this letter together. It was very well worded. I like the way that you picked out all the things and um I really appreciate uh you getting this done for us on behalf of the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Valerie?
Yeah, thank you. I think this is a well-written letter. Um I did, I think, I think your um. Reference to Safe Streets for All does kind of connect Varnum and Rundell as part of one thing, so I just want to make sure that we're clear that. That is an actual East Coast Greenway Trail, um and so it should be the same throughout um. As a bike lane, um if we can make it that way, so um but I will email you my specific comment on that um to incorporate. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Jenny.
Um I already provided my comments to Joseph, but I um yes, just thank you for working on this. I appreciate it. Um I don't have any additional uh comments to add to it.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali.
Uh just want to say thank you to Joseph for this letter, but I think the date that he had. It should be twenty-four because we received the final agreement on twenty twenty-four. September nineteen twenty twenty-four. That's all, and I appreciate what the, you know. For his time, that's a great letter and I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Uh Sarah, um Benton, I know you're still here. Anything that you want to say? I want to make sure I give you the floor as well in case of anything. And I know your mic is unmuted, but I, we cannot hear you if you're speaking, Sarah. Um we cannot he- is it just me guys or you guys cannot hear Sarah as well?
Can't hear it. It sounds crackly there like she's trying.
Okay. I said no comment. Thanks for the thorough review and you'll be receiving the the letter, Sarah. Thank you so much and thank you for staying because I know it's definitely um. Definitely, no, don't worry. You you heard that information and I'm sure you guys get back in. Again, thank you so much for making sure we have a good partnership and collaborating. So Valerie, you have um edits that you're gonna send um to make sure we're on it. And guys, we're gonna have a like a hard deadline, you know, send it like, uh because remember we have um. The staff is out for Juneteenth, so there's nobody on Thursday. And then tomorrow's early uh this, you know, early dismissal, early dismissal for the kids, uh tomorrow's the last day for school. My mind is somewhere else, but the city offices, all the administrative buildings are closing two hours early, so if you guys could send it ideally by. Tonight, if not tomorrow, so that way I could come in, sign it, so that way it goes out um first um first day on Friday. Because if not, um we might have to wait after Thursday of next week. So I'm trying to make sure we put it out and that way we go our merry way into the various things we need to do for research and check this off the box. So Joseph, again, thank you so much for putting this um together. Um uh the other thing I want to say that it it um it helps to have um three bikers, um council members. And in the council, uh we increased it. Uh we had three and we kept three because I know Luke, uh Jared and Valerie bike. Now we have Jenny, Joseph and Valerie biking as well. So it's good because you guys are able to see some of the fine details because you guys do ride those roads as well. So um you know, um how great and wonderful and bumpy they are and. We um I don't know if you want to add something about the trolley trail in that letter as well? I might send you like a line or something to add, Joseph, is to say like, you know, to make sure that we are in. The plan is so sing units with whatever is coming our way, you know, I could probably put just one sentence to highlight it to make sure it's like. It's part of the bigger plan that is something we're working on coming and we wouldn't mind their support on making sure this happens as well. All right, so um that is just my feedback at this point and um we will get that letter out. And um thank you, Joseph, again for uh taking on that um that role. Because that was a big document that you basically dissected and um you did that prior to the the presentation today, so definitely was um. So what I'll do next time, Joseph, remind me and Meli as well, if we have a presentation, we have a letter, let's put them back to back. So that way we go straight from the presentation to the letter, okay? So if you guys could help me out with that, I appreciate it. So any uh council members, any of you guys, if you see it, flag it to see if we could move it, okay? So you guys are gonna have to like work on this collectively. All right, thank you guys so much. Now we have a presentation of minutes. The city clerk will present the minutes for June third, legislative minutes for the mayor and council. Once again, they're the minutes, there's no vote. She presented, they're in your package. And on September, when we come back, and they'll be up for vote. Um if you have any adjustments to make, send it to Melissa. Melissa will highlight it for the meeting. Joseph, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
I was just gonna note, I don't recall who adjourned the meeting and who moved to adjourn the meeting, but I know it wasn't Luke and Jared. So you might want to go back and fix that.
This is the meeting for June third?
Yes.
You know, knowing them, they're they're here working with us. But but double check on it. Any additions you guys have, always send it to Melissa so that we should review them and she'll like highlight them. Um if we could do it before the meeting, it works even better, okay? But um all right, thank you so much for that and motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wow, you guys took forever. I thought you'd be running to get out of here.
Send me a second to find my mute button.
Okay, can I have a second?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't, I I said the motion to adjourn.
You did motion. Okay, motion, motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Yeah, it's it's really late for all of us, guys. I was probably moved in second. Any discussion? Objections, um objections? Here now, the meeting comes to an end at ten away. Thank you guys uh for putting up with three meetings in one day. I know it takes a lot of, a a lot of us to do this. Uh staff, thank you so much for putting all the documents and the work. You have a lot of work to do during the summer. Um it's not a break for, I think, any of us, but at least it gives us a relief for not having to come to the meetings. And that's sometimes is needed as we have a thousand things uh to do. So um have a good night, everyone, and thank you, everyone, for being here. All right?
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, everyone.